This is for, uh, sorry, which one is?
Yeah, this probably right here.
And how are you?
Good, Stuart, how are you?
All right, we have a computer problem, sir.
Well, that's.
Scheduled presentation. So first, we're going to have the presentation from the Oakland County Equalization. I was about to say Authority, but Group. So welcome back after a couple of years of COVID, uh, not being here, so welcome.
Thank you.
There you go.
Yeah, it's a PDF. So I'll be scrolling. Hi, I'm Brian Paris. I'd like to thank the Council and the Administration for welcoming us back. It's been a while with COVID. We haven't had the opportunity to come and present to you folks. Uh, I'm Brian Paris. I'm a Field Supervisor at Equalization. I'm from the Real Property Group, and this is my colleague Andrew. I'll let him introduce himself.
Hi, I'm Andrew Kramer. I'm the Real Property Appraiser assigned to the City of Rochester. Um, some of my responsibilities include reviewing property transfers for inclusion in our sale studies, reviewing the city's building permits, as well as making in-person door-to-door visits to, uh, to update record cards and review improvements and things like that.
Welcome, thank you.
Yeah, so Andrew is really the face of our organization out here, working with your taxpayers. The largest class of property in Rochester is residential, as we'll see in the slides we've prepared today. Uh, this is just a brief update on what transpired in 2022 and where we're headed in 2023. Our mission is to ensure uniform assessment in all the classes of property. Uh, it's to process splits and combinations of land in accordance with the Land Division Act. It's the apportionment of taxes as it relates to all the taxing jurisdictions throughout the county. Uh, Equalization serves as contracted assessor for 32 communities in Oakland County. And our number one goal is to provide excellent service to our residents, business owners, our community partners, the contracted units, and everybody who has a stake in, you know, living, working, playing in Oakland County. Uh, we're divided into six specialized departments. The Real Property section is where Anthony and I come from. We handle the valuation of land and buildings. We have business personal property auditors who handle the valuation of the, uh, the business property, the desks and chairs, the tables, the cash registers within businesses. We have our Land Descriptions group that handles the splitting of property and updating the county mapping tools. Uh, we have an Appeals group that handles the assessments that are challenged and head to the Michigan Tax Tribunal after appearing at the local Board of Review. Our Equalization team, they're responsible for ensuring the uniformity in all the classes of property throughout Oakland County. And we have a very large clerical section that handles the processing of paperwork and facilitating taxpayer visits and such at our, our primary office. Altogether, we have about 80 employees to serve our 32 contract units. Uh, this is just a visual representation. The green shaded communities are the ones in which we serve as contracted assessor. This is a snapshot of the parcel count and mix for Rochester in 2022. So by far residential has the largest holding of property. There's 4,605 parcels, and that includes subdivided land that is both vacant and improved. It's condos, both vacant and improved, and exempt parcels as well throughout all these classes here. Uh, there are about 366 commercial parcels in Rochester, a small industrial class of 46 parcels, and there are 974 personal property parcels. This slide shows you the ways in which the assessed value and taxable value changed from 2021 to 2022. So within Real Property in the top section there, we see that the commercial property in Rochester grew at just under 5%. Industrial property assessed value grew by nine and a half percent. The residential property class increased by about three and a quarter percent. And when you look at the improved, or rather, the real property altogether, it moved about four and a half percent in the positive. Uh, it's a different story for personal, and I'm sure you'll see on the next few slides. Rochester kind of looks odd compared to other communities. And a lot of that has to do with what happened in the industrial personal property class as it relates to Par Pharmaceuticals. Um, in 2021, Par Pharmaceuticals did not file for the EMP, the Eligible Manufacturing Personal Property Exemption, and the full weight of their personal property was on the roll in 2021. Uh, they have since filed for 2022, and that's why there's a 97% loss to the industrial, uh, personal property class. Otherwise, the other, um, personal property classes of commercial and in utility shows modest increases in valuation there. This is just a visual representation of where the assessed value is distributed amongst the classes. 75% of the assessed value in Rochester is in that gold residential class. Uh, just under 20%, 19% is in the commercial class, 4% in industrial, and the remaining is minimal in the personal property class. Uh, like assessed value, the taxable va- value has a very similar distribution. 77% of your tax base is in that residential class. About 17% is in commercial, 3% is in industrial. This is just a summary of the totals from the prior slides. So we can see that for real property in 2022 and assessed value, there's almost $1.1 billion in Rochester. Taxable value is about $862 million. Uh, personal property is about $22 million assessed and taxable. Communities often want to know how they are doing compared to other cities, so that's what we've shared here. This first slide is both real and personal values. It's a combined slide. The next two slides look quite similar, but real is broken out, personal is broken out. So with that anomaly with Par Pharmaceuticals, you can see that, uh, that was $35 million, uh, that was coming on, coming off the roll between '21 and '22. It had a pretty major impact, so it appears as though Rochester did not perform that well. This is cumulative, so it's all classes, real and personal. Um, but in the first two slides, you see in a comparison of 2021 to 2022 assessed value, the percentage of change. In these latter columns, you see 2021 taxable as compared to 2022 taxable, and again, that rate of change. So this is saying there's a very miniscule amount of change in the taxable value from one year to the next. Um, if any councilperson's interested, we can dig in deeper. I don't have.
Yes, yes, please. If you could provide us what our data would be without that one-time anomaly, I think that'd be really helpful.
Yeah.
Because we do like to compare with the other municipalities. Thank you.
Certainly. Um, as I said, these next two slides look quite similar. You'll see here that this is just considering the real property only. And with that anomaly of, um, the personal removed, you can see that, um, in terms of taxable value and assessed, uh, Rochester is a little bit more similar, still below the average, but, you know, we've got a lot of different things going on in different communities. Um, some communities had some major events or major new taxpayers, like in Pontiac, Amazon came online, and that was just a huge boon to that community. And believe it or not, some communities are still playing catch-up from the recession, whereas Rochester is a more stable community. You don't see the wild swings or the tremendous growth even in these latter years. Um, as I said, that was real property. This is personal property, and you really see the impact of the Par Pharmaceutical EMPP playing out here. Um, in 2021, the total taxable value was 58, almost 59 million. In 2022, it is, um, 22 million, just a little bit more than. So don't think that, um, this was a tremendous loss to the community in terms of tax revenue, because there is a replacement, um, mechanism through the state of Michigan called the Essential Services Assessment that replaces the revenue that is lost from, uh, this Eligible Manufacturing Personal Property Exemption. So we'll talk a little bit more about that as we progress through the slides. Uh, this is an average residential property value for the sale prices of real property, residential real property in 2021, and the average assessed value. You can see there's a little note here. It says includes the improved and vacant parcels in the residential classification. So, um, if you're just thinking about improved properties, this doesn't really tell the whole story, and we can actually segregate and provide that data to you, um, in addition to what's been supplied today. So we're happy to do that. Because personal property plays such a significant role in Rochester these last few years, I wanted to spend a little bit more time talking about it. This is what happened in terms of filings in 2022. So four eligible manufacturing personal property statements were filed. Um, that leads to the exemption for that personal property, which is related to manufacturer processes and the, uh, commercial property that is directly related to supporting those processes. Um, in 2022, there were 616 small business exemption affidavits filed. Uh, in 2022, that would be personal property holders, business owners, that had $80,000 true cash assets or less. They would be exempt from taxation. So that's the number of filers there, 616. And 159, um, personal property holders filed statements. The balance are properties that we have to estimate, because we did not receive either an exemption or a statement of value from that personal property owner. I touched on the Essential Services Assessment related to the Eligible Manufacturer Person, Manufacturing Personal Property, uh, exemption. And this screen, I thought it was important to include 2020, 20, and 2021, because this shows that, um, phenomena of Par Pharmaceuticals filing in one year and not filing in the subsequent year. So you can see the reimbursement made from the state of Michigan to Rochester. In 2020, the year in which Par Pharmaceuticals filed, um, was much higher, almost, uh, $370,000 some thousand dollars. Because Par was on the roll and they had a taxable value of $37 million, they just paid taxes that year. Therefore, the state did not need to make a reimbursement in the same, uh, range. But as I said, they have filed again in 2022, so I would anticipate your reimbursement being much more in the range of the 2020 reimbursement that similarly saw, um, Par Pharmaceutical file for the exemption. Uh, there are some details here, and if you want to, uh, learn more about, uh, personal property exemptions, you can visit the state of Michigan's website. You can also speak with the group in our office that is the experts in personal property valuation. It's headed up by Terry Schultz, a chief at Equalization. And, uh, our website has a few resources as well. I do want to draw attention to the fact that that small business taxpayer threshold of $80,000 is changing. The legislature, legislature enacted, uh, legislation that increases that threshold to $180,000 true cash, $90,000 assessed. Um, I thought it was important that you know how that will impact your bottom line, so we have prepared an estimate for you as to the amount of personal property valuation, uh, personal property assessed value that will be exempted from the roll in 2023. Uh, it's about $4.3 million, and that recognizes an increase of $3.1 million above what was previously exempted under the prior threshold. Um, as this is an estimate and personal property is a self-reported tax, uh, these figures are all subject to change based upon the filings we receive, uh, by, in February of 2023. Uh, this is the State Tax Commission's Bulletin for the Inflation Rate Multiplier. Uh, that's what we've used since the inception of Proposal A to adjust, uh, property owners' taxable value from year to year in the absence of an uncapping event. So for 2022, it's 3.3%. Um, Proposal A limits the growth of taxable value by the rate of inflation, or 5%, whichever is less, in the absence of an uncapping or a sale of property. Um, in the instance where there's a sale of property, the next year's assessed value establishes that new taxable value, but the Inflation Rate Multiplier comes into play with Proposal A every year thereafter. Um, I'm sure it's no surprise to everybody, we have record inflation this year. The IRM will most likely be five, it will be 5%. Put money on that. Um, it's never happened since 1995 with the inception of Proposal A. Um, the closest we came to it during the recession was 4.4% one year. So while the real estate market is quite strong, we do anticipate there will probably be an uptick of activity at our Boards of Review, just because people are going to be seeing a 5% increase on their taxable value, most likely. So I wanted to talk a little bit about the Headley rollback. Um, Headley, introduced in 1978, it was a constitutional amendment. It affects all properties, so Proposal A just affects properties on an individual basis. That proposal A controls the growth of taxable value on individual parcels. Headley impacts the millage rate that is applied to all properties. So when a community's taxable value growth exceeds that of inflation, with the exception of new physical construction, the millage rate has to be rolled back to ensure that, uh, no more than the rate of inflation is collected on that property that previously existed on the roll. Again, we're a very specialized department. Uh, if you have questions about Headley, Shannon Moore, uh, has all of the documents, the calculations relating to Headley. Uh, she is a great resource if you want to learn more about Headley. Uh, major variables that impact Headley, so it's all about taxable value growth. So pop-ups or transfers of property has a major impact. The more transfers you have, the greater the rollback figure will be. Um, you know, change in CPI, so the lesser CPI, the greater the impact on Headley. The higher CPI, the lesser the impact on Headley. Um, exemptions, uh, they play into the formula in different regards. Uh, property that is returning to the roll from a previously exempt status, and also property that is getting exempted for the first time. They play different parts in the formula. And you can see the formula here. It is your prior year taxable value minus losses times the rate of inflation, with your denominator being your current year taxable value minus additions. And that will give you your millage reduction factor. Um, I've provided Rochester's millage reduction factor here. So this is, uh, the multiplier that is taken against your city operating millage, uh, taken against your POC, uh, the, the millage for the elderly, that's taken against that as well. Uh, another item that impacts, and I know this is hard to read from a distance, uh, the open Michigan Tax Tribunal cases. As I said, we have a group of, um, appraisers, highly skilled, that handle tax appeals. Um, I used to be on that team myself. I worked with Mr. Crot. There are relatively few tribunals for Rochester this year. Um, Goodyear Tire, a little three-bay, um, vehicle service, uh, facility is under appeal. It's a little bit too far for me to read. Not major dollars, but JR, uh, Investors, that is the Park Hotel. So there's some major dollars there. And as I say, we've got a, um, a team of individuals, appraisers, highly skilled. They, uh, review the evidence prepared by the opposing, the, rather, the, um, business owner. Don't want to call them opposing, valued asset to the community. Uh, they prepare the petitioners of, or review, rather, the petitioners' evidence, see what merits it might have. They prepare their own analyses to see whether or not settlement is in order or if we proceed to a hearing in which we defend a value. It may be the initial assessment, it may be a figure less than. And in, uh, the past few years, with the market doing so well, sometimes we go in with like an even higher figure, um, as our contention of value. Um, these significant matters like, um, JR Investors, uh, we do communicate with Mr. Crot, and, uh, he plays a role in those, um, issues as well.
So, so JR Investors, so since they've purchased the hotel, they've filed this, uh, reduction in taxes?
Uh, this is what they're going for in 2022. Uh, our involvement is more in residential, so I'm not really that familiar with, um, commercial activities, but Mr. Crot might have something.
Mr. City Attorney.
Sure. So they, they did appeal for 2022. They actually filed, the old, the previous owners filed before the transaction. Um, so, um, we, we are actually in discussions with them at the moment. One of the issues, of course, is because they're going to be uncapped. And so, um, that's going to be a, a big number for them. So it's, it's really forward-thinking, uh, not necessarily this year, like, uh, because this year's taxes are as of December 31 of 2021.
Right.
So this next year, 2023, is when they're going to get a, a, a big change. So, uh, I think they, they filed it to preserve their right to, to talk to us, uh, about it, if that's a fair way to say it. So, um, we're talking about it. I, I don't think it'll be overly scary, um, the actual result for this year's tax appeals. Because it's really, I mean, the, the number they're looking at is, is, I think no one would think that $8 million for the Royal Park Hotel, uh, true cash value is, is appropriate. They, they have to put something in, and, uh, so it will, it, it's not going to be that, that scary of a number that you see.
Thank you.
Hopefully.
Uh, some highlights of 2022. So the State Tax Commission does audit all assessing jurisdictions, and in 2022, all of Oakland County was audited. Um, I'm happy to report to you that, uh, Rochester passed with flying colors. We passed our EMAR, and our next audit will occur in 2027. Um, if you have questions about what's included in that audit, I actually have the letter from the auditor that I can forward to you, and it's pretty extensive, the review that is done. Another significant event, a positive, uh, highlight for this year is that we are under the direction of Michael Lohmeyer. You can see a lot of, um, initials after his name. He is a leader in the field of assessment and appraisal. Um, he just brings a wealth of experience to Oakland County. He has served in the, um, assessor position in other Oakland County communities, um, Auburn Hills, Novi. He has substantial experience in private appraisal practice. He, um, is a very well-regarded and sought-after lecturer. His specific expertise, I would say, is in, um, large commercial valuations. So he played a significant role in the big box appeals, um, not just in Michigan, but across the, the nation for many years. So he has a multi-state, um, experience. He was, um, appointed to the Michigan Tax Tribunal to serve as a member by, um, Governor Granholm, um, but he returned to both private practice and the assessment administration fields, and that is where he is today. Uh, the assessor of record for our 32 communities and the Director of Equalization. Um, I'm one member of the leadership team at Equalization, but we are working on some key initiatives, some ways to improve the service provided to our, um, community partners, our contracted communities, the, um, residents and the business owners in Oakland County. Uh, we have a goal of improving, um, communication to help our contract partners with their budgetary needs. Um, and we also have a major focus on professional development of our staff through educational opportunities, training, mentorship. Um, one thing that is pretty cool is that this year, our entire office, every employee is taking the uniform standards of professional appraisal practice. And this year's, um, version of that class has some new, um, training objectives. Um, I think that it probably isn't a surprise to you. You've probably heard the national stories about bias in valuation, how, um, people are treated differently, um, in appraisal scenarios. And the bias even extends towards, um, our own thinking towards how certain property types should be valued, like, why is a trial level, um, historically, trial levels are sometimes viewed as inferior to, um, properties in which all of the living area is above grade? Well, why do we have that thinking? True that. Where in the marketplace do you see that kind of thing? So this is a really, um, great training opportunity for our staff to, um, get up to date on the professional standards of the appraisal practice. And I thank you very much, Council and Administration, for welcoming us today. Uh, we're glad to return and give, um, presentations in the future, and we will customize the data we bring to whatever your liking is. Andrew, anything you'd like to say? Thank you for having us.
Any questions, Council? Councilmember Trent.
Um, I just had one. If you go back to the slide with, uh, companies that were, um, contesting the taxes that they were assessed.
Sure.
It, it says Flagstar Bank, but there's two. Is there two in Rochester or where?
So there are two parcels there. One is an improved property that fronts, um, I think it's Main Street.
Right.
And then there's a little parking, a little sliver of paved land that is parking.
Okay. Okay, so let's, please, to both.
Mayor Proton?
Oh, thank you. Thank you once again for being here again. It's great to see you. It's great for not only Council, but also residents to hear your process and what you do. Um, a couple of questions. You answered one during your presentation. In looking back, we had talked about Rochester's recently transitioned to a multi-year budget. So just wanted to reaffirm that you are providing multi-year data to Administration for our, our multi-year budget.
We will certainly, uh, make that a priority for 2023 and include, um, subsequent year estimates.
Right, understanding it's an estimate.
Yes.
Of course. Um, and then secondly, you mentioned our, um, rollback figure, .9958, and the factors that affect that. I'd be interested to know how we compare to other municipalities. Are we being, I mean, it's, it's good news for taxpayers, right? You know, that their taxes aren't going up as much, but how do we compare? How is Rochester affected by that Headley rollback, um, versus other communities?
Sure, we have that data. We can certainly supply, uh, the rollback figures for all of the taxing jurisdictions.
Great, thank you. Um, I thought I had one more. Nope, you answered it. Great, thank you. Thank you very much.
Other questions? Thank you for coming tonight.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we're going to move on for, speaking of budgets, to the RARR budget. So we have the presentation, so welcome.
Anthony, you want to get him to that, up there again?
Second one at the top. Next tab. No, that's not it. One more, one more.
No.
No, keep going down. Scroll down. There you go.
All right, RARR.
All right. First off, I'd like to say thank you for having me tonight. I appreciate being able to be here and present our budget to you. Uh, once I leave this meeting, I have to head over to Rochester Hills as well to, to present as well, so.
Get it all done.
On the front end of this one and the back end of that one. Uh, many of you I know, I've, I've been with RARR since 2013, uh, in the capacity of Superintendent and Assistant Director. And, uh, recently, the RARR Board, uh, approved my appointment to the Executive Director position, and I'm, was happy to accept. It's a good opportunity, uh, to continue with the staff that we have, uh, of young, professional staff that is great for this community and takes much of the programming to the next level. And you can see that from our participation numbers and, uh, the programs that we've incorporated throughout this. and the programs that we've incorporated throughout this last year to make sure that we're meeting your needs. We can start with this first.
Wait, I want to give your name for the record.
David Word. And I'm the executive recreation director for the Rochester Avon Recreation Board.
Thank you.
First slide here is our 23 to 25 proposed budget highlights. I'll briefly hit a few of these details on here. If you look in where we were, if any of you were on council in previous years when RARA went into a fund balance recovery state, you can see that there's some improved numbers there. And we expect at the end of 2021, you can see we were at $644,391 in fund balance, which is 35.9% of our fund balance. We were down to negative at one point since 2016. So it's good for all of you to be aware that we are back in compliance with our 20% fund balance and we expect to stay above that throughout these years going forward. One of the major accomplishments this year to stay in that realm and get capital improvements going for RARA, we have $800,000 worth of roof improvements that needed to take place on our 500 East Second Street building. It's been an issue for years and trying to find the funding to be able to support that was difficult. Luckily, being able to sell the 480 East Second Street property, which will be going back on the tax books for the city as of this Wednesday, is the final sale of that building. The purchaser is looking to continue it as a recreational spot for the city. They're an investor and they're bringing in a renter who's going to continue with sports programming over there. So they're going to continue that Second Street area as a recreational hub for the city, which in our interests and in the RARA board's interest was one of the things that we wanted to make sure was a possibility. If not a commercial business, someone that could, you know, support recreation for the community as well. Current, so the current proposed, 2023 proposed budget has the use of $195,640 from our fund balance, which will still leave us at 21.4% of our annual operating expenditures. And this graph here shows you where our operating fund has been over the years. Obviously, this year is going to be a significant increase in our operating budget, which will come back down next year and stabilize again based on the sale of this property at 480 Second Street. So some of our program highlights here, you can see on page 30 of your packet, some of the events and programs that have really exceeded our expectations throughout the year and throughout the last couple of years has obviously been our camps, a huge improvement year over year. And when you get to the presentation on the next few slides, you'll see some of those numbers and how they've increased. But along with some of our contractual programs, camps and our adaptive programming for our special needs population has really seen an increase and uptick in our registrations throughout this last year especially. Decrease in our expenditures and revenues with our memberships since COVID. We've seen a dramatic decrease in the amount of participation. And a lot of that wasn't really our fault. We had to shut down for almost a year there at the fitness center just with all the COVID restrictions. We tried to keep as much programming that we possibly could open to the public. We went virtual for quite a few of our programs, but I'm happy to say that compared to a lot of the other agencies that were providing services for other cities, we had a lot of in-person programming that was following Oakland County standards to make sure that we could provide that in-person programming, which based on our community needs was very important to them. Being able to be out and still be a part of the community during COVID was especially important. And finding safe ways to be able to provide that service was such an important part of our abilities there at the Recreation Department.
David, in addition to obviously the impact of COVID, and I've always reported on that at the City Council after our board meetings, can you talk a tiny bit about the impact of the dance program where we lost, you know, instructors and everything else and how we're catching up and there's still a lot of work to do there?
And so the dance program in particular was an $800,000 revenue generator for our Recreation Department. And unfortunately, due to the facility issues that we had at 500 East Second Street, the roof deficiencies and the leaking of the roofs and some of these other things, we just really didn't have the funding to be able to improve during that time. We had instructors and literally started new businesses throughout COVID and opened up down the street from us. It was unfortunate, but also it was good to see that they stayed in our community. They were providing a huge service to our community. And some of those instructors, I still have good relationships with and they've been a big part of what Rochester and Rochester's Hills has provided to the community throughout the years. Because of that, the $800,000 in revenue has decreased to under $200,000 for RARA. And we're taking that program and building it back up from the bottom. So you'll see throughout our registration process, we're now with preschool and kindergarten programs back there versus middle school competition programs and high school competition programs that were really feeding, you know, that generation of, if you see our high school teams performing, they've been winning state championships in some of those, you know, some of those areas. So good to see that RARA has always been strong in the dance community and cheerleading and some of these gymnastic type ventures. And RARA has been, you know, kind of the backbone of that and we expect to be back there eventually.
Thank you.
Some of the expenditures that have increased along with revenues, they all coincide with each other. So if you see an increase in our contractual programs and revenue, you're going to see almost an equal increase in our expenditures along those same lines. Same thing with our adaptive services. During COVID, we had to limit our camp experience for the adaptive population and now, once again this year, we've added that back to our schedule. So a seven-week SCAMP program took place this summer with, I believe, 70 youth and adults in our community that were able to participate in that. And we'll get to the presentation here. So it's a great year so far for us. This presentation was done at the end of July. So I'll, I have some updated numbers here too that I'll be able to give you throughout this presentation. Many of our activities, we've surveyed out. If you've received a postcard in the mail and you go to the backside of that postcard, there's a QR code for you to scan and it takes you to a survey that we've been assessing. Along with the city of Rochester, we've been assessing some of the recreational needs in the community. And I think we've both been getting the same calls and the same needs from our community. So we expect over the next year, two years, three years, to really work more closely as partners and develop a relationship a little bit better so we can serve more effectively the community of Rochester and Rochester Hills. So to date, we have 769 activities, which is 166 more than 21. The participation numbers have actually increased now to 9,280 participants on the year. So that's a significant increase over our 2021 numbers and on track to getting closer to our 2019 numbers, which is pre-COVID where we had 12,000 participants on the year. This year, we offered 160 dance classes, 97 camps, 22 early childhood programs, 40 activities for our special needs populations, 57 sports leagues and lessons. And in addition to those, we have a ton of events that bring our community together. One of those events in particular is our mom-to-mom sale. The last event that we just had had over 600 visitors on that day. We have 40 booths that fill the 500 East Second Street location and they fill up the lobby classrooms, fieldhouse. And we've sold out each of those events, the last three events that we've had. If you're interested, if anybody's interested in being a part of this event, the 2023 spring event is now filling up as well. One of our heavily anticipated events for this year is our Heroes and Villains One Mile Run. This is a great event for the family to come out and even council and mayor, if you come out, just take pictures and be a part of this. It's one of those events that you can't stop smiling. The kids and the parents and everybody who's involved with it is just having a great time along the Clinton River Trail.
Do you have the date for that event offhand?
Yep, the date is October 21st this year.
Thanks.
One of the events that we began during COVID was our trunk-or-treat. The event is a little different than a traditional trunk-and-treat. It's set up for the guests who are, you know, putting their cars out there. We have a lot of sponsors that come out for businesses and they're the ones that are putting their cars out there and others are coming out to participate. And it's a good promotional opportunity for them as businesses and then an opportunity for kids and families to come out and enjoy this. I guess more COVID-friendly type of activity versus what we traditionally had with the haunted house inside and our playscape and the indoor event that we had previous to COVID. So we continue to do it again this year and we're also going to look at bringing back some of the events that you're familiar with, the hoedown and some of the other events that we had previously to COVID. Unfortunately, one of the events that we had, a long-time-standing event at Rivercrest Banquet Center, who recently has closed its doors, the mother-son day-night and our daddy-daughter dances. We had an opportunity to move into the Rochester Hills Banquet Center, which is, if you have not been, is a beautiful facility. And it allows us to really offer an opportunity to expand on that event and offer it to more families. So instead of having two, three days of those events, we can do it in one or two days and also have an opportunity to expand it to even more families that want to participate. The sports event and events in our community, this year was a great year for our mayor's play ball event with Rochester Hills. We incorporated into the pitch-hit-and-run competition. And actually, one of our young athletes, if you haven't seen us on social media, she's in the seventh and eight-year-old division and she's waiting on an announcement to hopefully be able to participate in the World Series. So she's made it all the way to the finals. She went out to Chicago and was the top contender there. So we're finishing up at Pittsburgh. I think this is the last weekend for that event and then she'll know if she qualifies based on how she's done. One of our many partnerships, the community partnership with Rochester Community Schools is our middle school cross-country program. We offer the middle school championships every year for the, not only the Rochester Community Schools, but some of the private schools in the area can come out and participate in that. We have a traveling cup that goes from middle school to middle school each year. HARP has been the big winner the last few years for that event. Our latest community survey asked us to come up with more activities for our youngest audience. Lindsay Ramsey is our recreation supervisor in charge of coming up with early childhood programs. And she also manages our adaptive programming. These are some of the programs that she's offered in the last few years. Our Challenge Island steam classes and budding gardeners was ran by one of our interns this year. And obviously, SCAMP was brought back this year with great attendance. The dance program is on its way back. Some of our participants actually have won some competitions already this year. You can see from the awards on their faces. They did their final recital performance at Abindale High School this past year. And 2022 and 2023 registrations, the season for the recital classes, if you're not familiar with it, is 30 weeks long. So they start in September and they run into the end of May of the following year. And participation has increased again for dance year over year. And the big hit this year and last year was our summer camps. If you can see the participation there, we went from 1,200 kids served, 1,927 kids served, 60% increase. The most difficult task for us, and thanks to social media and the support of our community, was finding instructors and counselors that were able to come on and provide services for our kids in the community. We were able to get enough counselors this year to be able to provide that large of a service. We did still have some restrictions as far as space goes. We not only utilize municipal park here, but we use Blumer and Spencer Parks as well as hubs for our camp program. Next year, Michaela and Lindsay are already busy trying to retain and recruit more staff for next year. By June, we were already full on camps and having to go out and reach out to new potential counselors to come on. And we had 14 new counselors come on after our camps were already full to be able to provide all the kids off the waitlist the opportunity to participate in our camps this past year. So here's a scale of our monthly participation. You can see the big jump there was April. That's when our date camper registration opens for the year. So there's a huge spike in registrations for that month. We've also had a good spike in August now for our fall dance program registrations along with some of our contractual programs and some of our fall events as well. So the annual participation, when I printed this report, was 8,282 and now we're at 9,280 participants for the year. So that's 1,450 more than all of 2021's participation and 4,000 participants more than our 2020 registration. This is also the same revenue report that you saw in the earlier document. So some of the notes to hit on this is, it definitely looks a little out of the ordinary with the sale of the 480 building. The revenue earned from the sales is going to be immediately invested in the new roofs at 500 East Second Street along with some parking lot improvements that we have scheduled and dumpster enclosure that needs to be put in over there as well. 2023 will be more back to normal with a moderate increase in revenue, but a draw from fund balance. But that draw from fund balance is to provide $217,000 in capital improvements on the facility. So we're going to be moving our reception office over into the lobby to be able to provide another classroom space to continue and add more programming in that area as well. Some of the ADA compliance upgrades that we want to do on the facility is the automatic doors, so our adaptive participants can come in with their wheelchairs and make sure that they can get into doors. We've never had that on our facilities. Unfortunate, but being a repurposed, commercial space, we didn't have it in the budget originally to do it. So now with the sale of this building, we'll be able to provide some of those upgrades to better serve. In 2024 and 2025, we're projected to continue to contribute to our fund balance and the bulk of the major improvements are going to be done over at 500 East Second Street. And the anticipated revenue during this time, you can see for our fund balance, is going to continue to stay above that 20%. Our team at RARA continues to evaluate all of our offerings on a almost quarterly basis. Every time we complete a program, they're sending out a survey to get participation evaluation from not only the participants, but the instructors and our staff that is onsite. And along with our surveys, we feel that we're continuing to improve all the programming that we have on a consistent basis. We're in the process of redoing our mission and vision statement and putting in some new core values for RARA. And our staff has full insight on all of that along with the RARA board. So we expect to see a few changes in the future. Some of the ones that you can anticipate, we're looking to have a movies-in-the-park series that's going to be starting up. So we'll be having a screen that we're going to take around and go from park to park. So if there's any pocket parks that you want us to run a summer movie in, that's one of the activities that we're planning on implementing. We have some more races that we're looking to add to the schedule. We're hoping next year to have a St. Patrick's Day race that'll be running through downtown to coordinate with some of the many businesses downtown that are facilitating good recreational opportunities already down there. That is the conclusion of my presentation. If anybody has any questions for me?
Any questions, comments, motions?
I'll just make a comment if I could.
Mayor Protem, salve.
Thank you, thank you. I just want to thank you for your presentation and congratulations on navigating through COVID and, you know, managing that delicate balance of keeping your fund balance as well as putting those capital improvements into the facility. I think everyone is going to be really happy to see those in place. So just thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for the support over the last couple of years. I know a lot of your insight, you might not realize it, but, you know, we listen and we take from, Mark takes from all of you and gives. we take from, Mark takes from all of you and gives it to us and we pull from that as much as we can to make sure that we're supporting everything that you have. Nick and I have not worked as closely in the past, but I know our future is going to be great. There's some things that we're already working on with Hallbeck and JC and some of these other improvements to the city that I think are really going to be a good spark.
Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. So the pocket park opportunities, so you're looking at our park system, correct?
Absolutely.
Like Elizabeth, Hallett, municipal?
Yeah, any support that we can give, I mean, if that's, if there's an opportunity to run a movie in the park in one of those parks, we're planning on having a full slate in the summer of movies in the park to be able to offer to the community.
Thank you.
Councilmember Trent.
Yes, thank you for this presentation. You're just down the street from my office, used to be above me on 1014 East Second Street. But yeah, you have grown exponentially and it's exciting to see this presentation of all the children and the activities that you're doing and your children that you're servicing. But so exactly how do you bring a movie to the park? Do you have the screen and the sound or how?
Well, screen and sound system and we partner, well, it's not really a partnership, but you have to actually get the movies, the movie rights to be able to present some of those to a large audience. So we'll be using, obviously, some of our revenue and expenditures that are already built into the budget to be able to provide that service to the community.
Okay, well, just keep us posted. I'm very interested in that.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes, thank you for the presentation. I do have a question. When it came to the ADA compliance and that, has Rochester Hills or the city reached, have they been reached out to regarding possibly getting grants for that?
It is something that we're looking into. We have not been provided any grants for that, but there is, there are some available that we're currently in the process of developing.
And I have one other follow-up and maybe for administration then. Because it is all-purpose for the whole entire community, can CBDG funds be used for that? Because to me, I see, I know we have some of it allocated now for something else, but I think that it would be something that would, we should utilize those within our community at this type of purpose.
We can certainly look into that. That's a good comment.
Thank you.
And you should maybe ask at Rochester Hills' presentation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I do want to say one thing about the school system. This year, all of our participants that were Rochester and Rochester Hills residents were provided that camp experience for free because of Rochester Community Schools. They received grant funding for their adaptive programming that we were able to access and be a part of to be able to provide that service. So that's usually a $1,400 program for those participants and it was offered free this year and it will be free again next year as well.
So I have another follow-up then, if I may, Mayor. So has the school district been working better with you on the fields and taking care of that to make it better accommodations for the sporting events and that that have taken place? I know it wasn't always the greatest in the past.
It's been a slow go, but Matthew McDaniel has been a great support and he recently had a role change that is actually helping that support even greater. So I expect over the next couple of years, it has been, and it's about field usage and making sure those fields are appropriately taken care of, but they are looking on it.
Okay, that's good to know. Thank you.
Councilmember Albrecht.
I just, I know David talked about the roof replacement, the long overdue roof replacement. In our manager's notes, the manager's report is the timing for that. We, you've seen the storage of all the supplies out there, so it's starting, I guess, tomorrow. Tomorrow's the 27th, so I just wanted to make sure everybody had that. And just the capital improvements have been long overdue, painting the building to a new color, the interior and everything else like that. So this sale of the other building will really allow us to do these long overdue things. And I think the community, all the communities and all the people that use that facility are just going to, it's going to be like a breath of fresh air when you see there. Then I just had one other thought that I know we had talked about. I know Alec is here from DPW. We pay an exorbitant amount to a private company to plow our parking lot at RARA and I don't, I'd rather have that revenue go to DPW if we could, so maybe that's something we can look at to, again, our priority is to plow the streets and everything else. But I know we had talked about in our board, perhaps if the DPW could do our parking lots as part of it, again, to be paid for, would be something I'd like administration to just look at if they could. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, finally. Sorry.
Councilmember Peterson.
Oh, thank you. No, and I just, you know, sometimes decisions are made at boards to where if the decision to buy that building would not have taken place and the economy not, would not have gotten where it was, you know, you wouldn't be able to have the funding to be able to do all of this, which I think is, you know, was a good investment back then to do so that led to this opportunity. Thank you.
Yeah, if it wasn't for the support of councils in both Rochester, Rochester, we would have never been able to purchase that building. So I think that was probably the last time I was here was presenting, purchasing that building. And now I'm here again and not directly for the sale of that building, but without this opportunity, the improvements would not have happened, that's for sure.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve as presented.
Support? Motion by Councilmember Peterson, support by Councilmember Albrecht. Mr. Clerk, the roll, please.
Mayor Bixson.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Salvia.
Yes.
Councilmembers Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Thank you, good luck this year and good luck at the Rochester Hills Council.
I hope to see all of you soon.
All right, good, thank you. Okay, next on to the Main Street Oakland County accreditation presentation. So all good, good stuff tonight.
It's Oakland County night.
Oakland County night. So welcome.
Welcome, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm John Bry, the program coordinator for Main Street Oakland County. It's that time of year again. I'm happy to be before City Council to make an accreditation presentation to the Rochester DDA. And without the local government's support, that would not always be possible with our Main Street communities across the county. And the city of Rochester has certainly been a good ally and partner to downtown Rochester. It is absolutely one of the flagship downtowns in Oakland County and in the region. And that's no, no smoke. That's absolutely true. If that weren't the case, a little bit of an update for you. You may have heard me mention in the past that we were going to launch a pilot initiative that partnering with the National Main Street Center that we call Next Gen Main Street. And the whole idea behind that is to look at very advanced downtown districts and programs that have been very successful over the course of the years and sort of asking the question of what's next for these downtown districts? What's next for their organizations? What's next about the Main Street framework that we all follow across the county that they need to be thinking about to continue to be successful and evolve in the future? So after a little bit of a hiatus with COVID, we finally launched Next Gen. And we officially had site visits late in August with staff from the National Main Street Center who toured and visited Rochester at that time. And coming up in October, there will be a focus group that will take place. And Kristi and the DDA team will be sending out some information here soon. And there'll be a series of focus groups that will be done virtually with the National Main Street staff and hopefully you all get a chance to add your input as part of that process as we keep going forward. The end game with Next Gen is to come out with a framework and strategies and suggestions for the four pilot communities in Oakland County, which are the four pilot communities for the entire nation, of suggestions and recommendations that they should potentially explore as they go forward in their downtown journey. Your neighbors involved in the pilot are Ferndale, Royal Oak, and Farmington in their districts, so they are the other three pilots there with Rochester. But without further ado, I had to check with Kristi when I got here today. I was like, this is 18, right? Yes, this is 18. You're going to need a larger wall. But if you're not familiar or need a little bit of a refresh, we do an annual accreditation visit to all of the upper-level Main Street communities in Oakland County. We currently have 28 districts or communities engaged in the Main Street program across the county, the largest in our 22-year history. And those communities are divided into tiers and the upper-tier communities are comprised of 13, of which Rochester is part of that group. And we do these annual accreditation and partnership and evaluation visits that we use the National Main Street accreditation to check in on the community. And once again, Rochester is passing the flying colors, so congratulations. And the accreditation is really, you know, a tribute to the work of the downtown organization, the board, the volunteers, and yourselves as the community leaders, because we know from best practice of Main Street over the years that there is not a strong collaboration between the local government, the downtown organization, and its other stakeholders. They don't necessarily see the success that you all have enjoyed and have built up to over the years. So without further ado, it's my privilege to present to Kristi and anyone else that's here representing the DDA, your accreditation for 2022.
Thank you. Awesome.
Mayor, could we get a picture with you and Kristi and John?
Sure. And as tradition, we actually like to take a photo with all of you guys in it. Because the equalization guys are far better dressed than I am, so I try so often.
Oh, so you want us to move or are we going to stand up? What are we, what are we doing?
Kristi, why don't you guys go clear with the seal?
Okay, my board members, too.
Roger, yeah?
Yes, Roger, you too.
Are we going in front?
Yeah.
Okay.
Everyone gets in this thing.
Yeah, I knew you weren't going there. I knew you weren't going there.
It's only the second picture.
This way.
Bring the squishy.
We can squish it.
Squish it a little bit.
I can go where.
Right? And if you can just, there you go. Good. Get back up just a little bit. It's bigger. If you can come in that way just a little bit more on this side, there you go. There you go. All right. One, two, three, and one more. One, two, three. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Give yourselves a hand. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Yeah, he's kind of camera shy.
Any questions for me before I depart?
Thank you, John, as always.
You're welcome, Nick. Thank you.
One question. So, so what you said was it's the, it's four cities out of Michigan that are representing the nation?
Yes.
That's amazing.
We proposed this pilot to the National Main Street Center, in part with conversations with Kristi and observations and conversations with those other communities. We see a pattern and we posed the question about what's the future of sort of these very advanced downtowns? You know, they're asking, where do we go from here? Not that you're finished, it's a never-ending job, but where do we go from here? How do we keep evolving? And the National Main Street Center was very intrigued by that question and we proposed to them, we'd like to propose a pilot initiative and these are the four communities that we'd like to have part of that. So they agreed and we're finally moving on that. And Rochester is among the four, not only in Michigan, but the whole nation.
Wow.
So what comes out of this process will be shared with the whole country.
Wow. Great job for pulling that through. It's a big honor. Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, John.
We'll see you next year for 19.
19.
Okay, next, it's not on the agenda here. We're going to talk about some of the people who are questioning the tax, the tax payment. So Anthony or Marcy, do you want to kind of come up here and give a outline of what we're, what we're looking at?
Good evening, council. So you have received, there were three requests for appeal on the waiver for the penalty on late-received property taxes through state law. The only body that can waive the penalty is the governing body for the municipality on which it's collected, which would be you guys. We have not had one in a few years, but there should be, there were three for consideration. Not all of them, I know Village Green is here. I'm not sure if you have any of the, any others, but there were, the Spring View and the Panda would still request consideration and they typed up for you their, the whole reasons and documentation and everything for you. So typically, they, they can submit just in writing, they can also do both and submit in writing, here's the documents, come and talk to you and answer questions. And then ultimately, it's up to council on whether or not to, to grant the waiver on penalty portion only. It would not apply for the interest.
Thank you. So is there anybody here who'd like, we all, we all got the information?
Yeah.
So we're all good there? Is there anybody who'd like to come speak? So come on up and identify yourself for the record and welcome.
Hello, thank you for taking your time. My name is Mira. I'm with Village Green. I'm the property accountant for 701 Green Circle Rochester Apartments. I'm here today, I provided, I did send this last week, we provided that in the last 10 years, we have been paid timely taxes, summer and winter. I take fully responsibility for this mix-up that this time the taxes were paid late. We did void it, the original check that was sent, it was sent on time and unfortunately we do not have the backup and we did not get any information from the post office. So we, we did send a new one. It has been applied towards a payment and we're just requesting if just the fees can be waived just this time.
Okay, thank you. Mr. City Manager, do we want to do these one at a time?
I think we should.
Okay. So let's do the Village Green first. Council, comments? Councilmember Sage.
So normally, when these issues arise, it's on the agenda. So, Mr. City Manager.
Hang on.
Outside of a manager's report, okay, and I'm willing to consider all these things, but, so we need to make a decision tonight on all three of these?
Anthony, you want to come back up? This kind of gets jammed on us by the statute, so I think the answer is yes. We, we, we turned down the request because everybody's, all the respect.
So specific to this issue, was it just simply a timing issue?
Yes.
That's it? Did we get the money?
Anthony, go ahead.
On, on some of them, not, not all of the properties have paid fully yet. Some are pending the outcome because the interest will next accrue on October 1st. So in at least one of the cases, they wanted the case to be considered before council tonight because they didn't want to wait and get another, or potentially have to wait on a decision for the October interest. They, as, as the, as far as the appeals go, that timing is definitely one thing. Also, it's not in the packet because it's everybody's financial information. So we do not include those into the packet, so that is, that is not something that gets posted in the packet. And then they can request to have an agenda item if it's ahead enough time for notice, but they, it is the right to just come to public comment and just make the request directly to City Council.
Is this?
Councilmember Albrecht.
So I know I read some of the details of this and I'm looking to see where it was sent. I see the manager's report, but where you had it as items, items nine, but I thought there was something I read where Village Green had a more of an explanation and there was how much, how much.
It was a separate email for the confidentiality. A separate one sent that had three requests.
When was that sent? Because I, like, like Councilmember Sage.
Same day, same time. There's two of them sent. And again, I apologize if it wasn't clear. So what you're saying, so you're saying it has to be done tonight, Anthony? As opposed to pushing it to the next meeting?
It's the, it's the appeal side. So that they requested to council to say, I would like this considered, that timeliness because of the October 1st interest, they're requesting the consideration, all of, all of them tonight.
And I thought I might add that we don't control the interest, the county does, so we can't waive that. So they're trying to get in before it automatically goes to interest at the county. So we, we had no heads up. We just got this dumped on us and we rejected it because we don't see a reason for any of these to be late. There's circumstances and Anthony has the right to approve those under the statute, right? So, under the ordinance, yeah, the residential side, right? But not commercial, Village Green's commercial, yeah.
Commercial is, is not.
Right.
Mayor Protem Salvia.
Thank you. So I have reviewed the email, and I also reviewed our ordinance and, and discussed with Treasurer Maggio. And, you know, in my, in my, my day-to-day activity as a financial advisor, we issue checks for clients, 529 checks to pay bills. The mail has been a problem. It is a problem. Things don't get there when they're supposed to. So in reviewing this, I, I don't see that we can waive the penalty on this. It's your responsibility to get the taxes delivered on time. They're technically due July 1st, so there was plenty of time for this to arrive.
Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you. Yes, and as much as I understand and know too, that the mail has been awful, it's just the way it is. The tax bills are due, as Mayor Protem Salvia stated, July 1st. And, you know, I understand, because it makes it hard for us, especially for any of us sitting up here, to, I know the, to waive taxes when we know that other people in residential have as well, and they can't have that forgiveness. And I, I, it's, it's really bad, but I do think that it's been, it's, there's a whole entire two months before they're due. So I don't know if I can move forward, you know, waiving it either.
Anything further, council? So Mr. City Manager, do we need a motion?
It would help if we made a formal motion to either deny or approve the request.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to deny the request by 701 Green Circle, the Village Green.
So there's a motion by Mayor Protem Salvia, is there a second?
Support. Second.
Support by Councilmember Peterson, further discussion? Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Mayor Bixson.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Salvia.
Yes.
Councilmembers Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
And Trent.
Yes.
Sorry for that, but that's the decision.
Thank you, though.
Thank you for very trying, or for coming in. And then the next one is?
Panda.
We had Panda Ventures, and then 517 Spring View is the other one.
Okay, so let's do Panda next. Council.
Do we have anyone here? No?
No. Yeah, are you for, with Panda?
I'm just kind of here to bring something up.
On this subject? Okay, so when we get to the subject, you can bring it up. Mayor Protem Salvia.
Sure, so regarding Panda, in looking at this, I mean, they had some, I'll say, evidence from Chase Bank that the, it should have arrived by August 30th. So in my opinion, they should go back to Chase Bank and see if within that process there's some way that Chase could cover those penalties and those fees. Again, professionally, I have seen that happen through our financial institution. So I, I can make a motion to deny as requested, and suggest it, suggest they go back to Chase for Panda Enterprises.
Mayor, motion by Mayor Protem Salvia.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Albrecht. Mr. Clerk, the role, please.
Mayor Bixson.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Salvia.
Yes.
Councilmembers Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Peterson. Sage.
Yes.
And Trent.
Yes.
Thank you, and then the final one.
The final one is residential, so that was for 517 Spring View. They had submitted the documentation and followed the appeal process, so that goes to myself. I reviewed through the documentation. I did not feel that there was enough evidence to support the waiving of the penalty, so I denied that on my side. Talked with the property owner, I told him, the, the next step in the, if you want to continue is to do exactly this tonight, is that would go to city council. And then, and then he wished that to be considered tonight. Maple himself and his wife had a already prior engagement tonight at 7:00, but he did not want to wait till the October one to come before you. He, he felt that, he wrote up everything in, in the notice and, and felt the details were there, so he was asking for council's consideration, just based on what was submitted in writing for the penalty waiver.
Thank you. Councilmember Albrecht.
What was submitted in writing was your little write-up that, you know, you had investigated, you had a counter-conversation, and then.
And then the attachments, there should be two attachments.
Right, they said they had dropped off the checks at the drop-off box, but you, you didn't have, you, you didn't find enough to support that claim.
Correct, yes, yeah. I mean, we, the box is locked, it's, it's secured. I mean, we've even gone in the past so far as to try to, you know, if you know the day and time you dropped it off, we can pull it up on the camera to see, do we see you walk up to the box, you know, just something that's, that's more concrete proof. Not saying that they are, that this is, that it's an incorrect statement, but in treasury, when you're collecting penalties and interest, late fees, parking tickets, there's a lot of, you know, there's always, there's always stories and circumstances and that, that we have to consider. So based on what was submitted, I, I didn't find there was enough to act on. So then that was my conversation with the homeowners, that I can't do anything with it. And I look at it as if like, hey, you know, Treasurer Maggio, I see you waived the penalty on this address, what was the reason? And, and I feel like, you would need to have a substantial reason to justify to say, hey, yes, I did, here's the evidence why. I can support it and stand before you tonight and say, I feel good about that decision, and I just, I didn't have enough for it. So that's why I had.
And again, his own documentation shows that it didn't pass through Comerica Bank until after the date, September 7th, so I'll make a motion to deny the, the request for this waiving of the penalty.
Support.
Motion by Councilmember Albrecht, support by Councilmember Peterson. Mr. Clerk, the role, please.
Mayor Bixson.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Salvia.
Yes.
Councilmembers Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
And Trent.
Yes.
Thank you, council.
Thank you. Thank you, Treasurer Maggio. Next is approval of the minutes, consideration of the minutes of the regular meeting.
Maybe under.
Oh, I'm.
Public comment, yep.
Did you have a comment, ma'am?
Oh, yes. Public comment, yes.
Come on up. Thank you. Welcome, and give us your name and address for the record.
Patty, 758 Miller.
Patty.
Oh Weaver.
Oh Weaver, thank you.
Yeah. And I'm here in regards to photo records.
Yes.
Okay, um, there's people on the list that shouldn't, should have been removed 10, 20, 30 years ago. They've had name changes, address changes, they've died, and through my investigation, you're off by 10%. To me, that's a lot. I can understand one or two mistakes percentage-wise, but 10% is way too much.
And I think this issue's come up, Mr., Mr. City Clerk, Assistant City Clerk, would you like to comment that the state does these things?
Yes, so there is a, a process set forth by the state, it's called the cancellation countdown. There's a certain, you know, we can't just move voters off the roll, there has to be a certain process. They haven't voted in so many consecutive federal elections, they've passed away, they've moved and registered in their new location, sometimes people just move, and, you know, they stay on our rolls until the cancellation countdown kicks in. So we can certainly provide those resources for the exact language from the state.
But you're talking up to 20, 30 years. They should have been removed. You've told that before, and when I look at the state records, they don't match your records.
Right, but ma'am, this, it's a state process to do it, not our process.
Yeah, but if everybody's city, I mean, it don't make sense to be off a whole 10%. That's, that just doesn't make any sense to me.
Right, but the law says it's the state that does that, we do not do that.
But if I can find that this, that the records are all wrong, I don't understand why.
Then you need to contact the state, not us. It's the state law.
I've tried the state, and the problem is here, that's why I came here.
Okay, that's.
So what did the state say to you? When you contacted them, what did the state say to you?
They hang up on me.
No.
Who's she looking at?
So Mr. City Attorney, do you have any, I mean, it's the state process.
They won't let me question.
This is the first I'm, I'm hearing about this issue, I guess. Councilmember Peterson.
Your Honor.
Yeah, I thought I heard Leanne. Yeah, yeah, Leanne.
Leanne, Madam Clerk.
Hi, Your Honor. I'd be happy to forward some information on the city council. I've been working with Ms. Weaver for the last two months, she's been in at least 10 different times. I've tried to explain to her what the process is. We do have over 1,500 inactive voters that are scheduled to be canceled under the purge process that will take place after each even-year November election, and that is all conducted by the Secretary of State office.
So it's the state.
I haven't been in over 10 times, but I have been in three or four. I've talked to him.
Mayor Protem Salvia.
Yeah, I, I would just like to request, could we perhaps direct Ms. Weaver to a contact person at the state? You know, maybe we know a contact person at the state, so she could understand the process that is controlled by the state. So maybe we could put you in touch with someone, maybe that would help.
You want to hire me?
I, I can attempt to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe they'll hire you.
I mean, I can go over the, the books and say who's moved, who's dead, I mean, I just don't understand it.
I'll say it for the last time, it's the state that does it.
Yeah, I know, right?
Anything else?
That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Peterson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I do know that you can file a complaint with the Attorney General's Office on that, because they have to look into it. Okay.
Okay, next is the approval, any other further comments from the public? Okay, next is approval of the minutes, consideration of the minutes of the regular meeting of September 12, 2022.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Sage. Mr. Clerk, the role, please.
Mayor Bixson.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Salvia.
Yes.
Councilmembers Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
And Trent.
Yes.
Thank you. There is no consent agenda tonight, which is very usual. No business table items, public hearings, look for legislative deliberation, first is consideration of ordinance to man Article 27, site plan approval, section 2703, second reading and adoption.
Support.
No, I'll make a motion to move the amendment to second reading and adoption.
Is this second reading and adoption? This is second reading and adoption.
Yeah, her motion's the appropriate one. Okay, to move it for second reading and adoption, thank you.
I support.
Motion by Mayor Protem Salvia, support by Councilmember Trent. Mr. Clerk, the role, please.
Mayor Bixson.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Salvia.
Yes.
Councilmembers Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
And Trent.
Yes.
Thank you. Next, to reports in regular business, is a consideration of a local fiscal recovery fund distribution grant from Oakland County, and to request to authorize DLZ engineering to complete engineering drawings for the water main. Mr. City Manager.
Yep, I'm gonna have Alec come up.
Mr. Alec.
Council. So earlier this year in January, DLZ Engineering submitted three grant applications to the county for one-to-one matching grants funded through the ARPA monies. One of the projects that was selected was a water main looping project that's been high on our capital improvement list for our water main infrastructure. The matching grant was for $27,000 to complete engineering drawings for this project, for total price of $54,000. The estimated total cost of the project is between $580,000 and $660,000. And having these engineering drawings completed is, would make the project more shovel-ready, is the term, grant applications like these, eligible project for future grant, future grant opportunities. The two areas or the locations in mind are between Boulder Court and Miners Run, and then Letica and Creek Point Drive, so both on the GLWA side of the system. And so the request tonight is to accept this grant's award, and then authorize DLZ Engineering to complete the engineering drawings for the two sections of water main looping proposed in the grant application.
Mayor Protem Salvia.
Thank you. Question, so the capital to do the project, the 580 to 660, I believe that is in our current water rate study that we have in place, that we've included those capital projects? So I know we're not asking for that money tonight, but if we do the grant, we're spending city resources that hopefully we would then have the money to do the capital project. So question, is that capital money in our current water rate study? For these looping stations, the 580 to 660? There's consultations going on in the back of the room.
I don't think we've seen that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe that's the case.
I can confirm with the list off the top of my head, I don't believe.
Right, so we were looking to get grants for these, so it was not put into the, it was acknowledged, but never identified as a source for that.
Okay, so we.
We can't be left to account for just specifically this amount, but not for.
Correct.
And if that's a concern, this grant money does not be spent until the end of 2026, so it's only going to have to approve this tonight.
Mayor.
But again, though, so that we can get grants, you want to have the shovel-ready drawings, so they'll ask you for that if possible, so.
I mean, I know from an infrastructure standpoint, we have looked at this project several times, it's highly likely that we really want to do this project, but again, this is not, you know, the cost of the project is not in our budget, current.
Right, and, and Manager Nick is right on with that. The biggest thing we're seeing now on the grant applications is they want pre-engineering, pre-design, like as shovel-ready, as shovel-ready can get, like you are funded, you're, it's already an approved project, you can go shovel in the ground as soon as the money's available and start digging up and doing the project. That's why it's interesting, because like these grants, it's the grants to get you the plans to then get the other, to then get the other grants. So this amount we do have in the budget for that reason, not the full project, and one, because that's what we were planning on doing, was taking it when it's done, we'll have full, because they need line-by-line costs, detailed costs on absolutely everything for the applications. They, they want to know what is going to be spent, how much and where, and that's what this gets you once it's complete. And then we'll be able to, to move that forward and start getting up the actual applications.
Councilmember Gould.
Yes, thank you, sir. This looks like a wise use of funds. Somewhere in the back of my mind, I still have the dream of one day investigating additional well or wells to hook up the east side. As we proceed with these infrastructure improvements, I just want to make sure that nothing would preclude that from happening, where we did something, and oh, there's no way we could hook you up to the west side wells in 10 years, 20 years.
I think looping water infrastructure is never a bad move.
Correct.
It's always going to, no matter what you do, is going to make sure that you have increased flows and increased pressures.
No matter where the original source comes from, I agree.
Thank you.
Councilmember Albert.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Finance Director Maggio, this was one of the items we talked about that potentially could fall under the bond if we were to go to that direction, to, Mayor Protem Salvia's, you know, calling out, you know, we don't have the money for Mayor Protem Salvia's, you know, calling out, you know, we don't have the money for the $580,000 to $660,000 to do this, but this was one of the items we thought we might put into a future bond to come before City Council, is that correct?
You are correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure that everybody up here knew that. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yep, just real quick for administration, is this back in the area where Steve Zolk used to talk about with these easements?
Actually, no, it's they, he was ahead of us, so we ended up going out with DLZ and went out and looked at the shortest routes. There was some loose designs done, but they were going through the woods, and that's when Steve brought to our attention, I'm like, there's got to be a way better. So DLZ, we went out there and actually did some surveying informally, if you will, and moved all the routes. So same process, but different spots than Mr. Zolk talked about.
Okay, but it's still the same, same thing for this?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so the association's 100% on board with everything we're doing? Okay.
Oh, there we go, there's pictures of them, actually.
The easements have not been.
Done, yep.
Completed yet for, I know for this one at least. I know there's these here, I don't know if it's been.
Yeah, they haven't been formalized yet.
Oh, okay.
As a part of completing the engineering drawings, that would be part of the process.
I just wanted to make sure it was that same conversation we had a while back? Okay, I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson. Support. Support by Councilmember Sage, further discussion? I'd just like to say, I think this is just an investment.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, worst-case scenario, we're out this money, but potentially we can get a big grant. Mr. City Clerk.
Mayor Bixson.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Salvia.
Yes.
Councilmembers Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
And Trent.
Yes.
Thank you. Alec, I don't know if you want to stay up here for the next one. Next is a consideration request to authorize Davy Tree to clean up storm damage in Dinosaur Hill Nature Preserve. Alec.
Yes, so I'm not sure if you guys are aware, but we had a pretty big storm recently.
Really?
And it's turned Dinosaur Hill into kind of a war zone. So city has contracted with Davy Tree for tree services going back many years, and you know, usually tree removals can be anywhere from three to $8,000, but we're looking at a little bit more work than that. So they initially anticipated up to three weeks of work out there, but that would cost quite a lot more money, so we're looking to authorize them to work out, to not exceed $40,000, which is looking at about two, two-and-a-half weeks of like full-time work with them.
Is that going to get the job done?
No.
No, or close to, or?
Close. We have a limited budget for tree removals, and we didn't want to burn all that couple months into the budget, so that's going to be enough to get everything out of the way and do what we need to do to get back into normal operations, and then if need be, we can go back.
Exactly, I could add to that. So the key is there's hangers in the tree that we can't get our bucket truck back to so they can. So they would get all that stuff on the ground, they're going to chew up the, we talked to Sue, they're going to chew up the bark and shoot it onto the paths if we were into the woods. And then clear enough, like Alec said, that we could get through there, that our crews could come in the winter and pull the, and other stuff on the sides, accessory things, but right now, we can't even get through there. You need crews of six guys back there with buckets, and it's a mess. And it took down, that's, that's why five days on our side of the town, power was out, it was all hung up in there, and they had a hard time getting out of there.
That's an area that caused a lot of power outage, too, with our own trees going over the power lines.
So it won't completely the job.
DTE can't complete that?
They cleared, they did the first wave, they got it off the wires, and then it's, that's all they can do.
Right.
So this is on us.
Totally will do.
Correct.
That's a good point.
Mayor Protem Salvia, did you?
No.
Councilmember Albert.
So on the estimate that Davy did on the page 92, when you do the math, they're charging us $3,600 a day, $18,000 a week, five times 3,600. So this 40,000 will really cover just 11 days, and they're estimating three weeks. So, thank you, City Manager, you addressed the shortfall where DPW can do it, and I know we have a good relationship with Davy. Do we ever go out and re-bid this? I mean, I know there's, there's a plethora of tree providers, and you know, we always say going out for three bids, and I know we give the DPW where you have good relationships with certain vendors to, you know, to pick up the phone and call them. I know you do that, Jason does that a lot, so, but you know, maybe from time to time we should relook at this and see if we could get better pricing.
And that's a fair question. I could tell you after the storm, so we usually do do that, and Davy, in the cemetery, for instance, there was a big silver maple that came down, looked like the whole tree came down, that was one branch. So Davy went out there, and we called Scott Wendell and said, would you go look at it? Davy didn't, they couldn't get there for a week. Wendell had somebody cancel, so he went in there and got it. So we use other contractors, but we make sure we're not getting ripped off of fuel. So Davy, we went down to the hour. Carl's really good about looking at what they're charging us for that rate, and it was competitive, and our, our overall budget that we have with them, our overall contract is a discounted price because of the work that we do. So, so we're comfortable that there's no advantage to this to go out to the other folks. It's a big job, too. So our one crew, Scott couldn't give us the time, Warren Key couldn't give us the time, Oakland Tree Service couldn't give us the time to get into that many, you know, almost three weeks, that would take them for a year to do it. So they can dedicate a crew, because they're so big, to get in there and get it done at one, once they come, we want them to get out so that we can, we can finish it.
So this 40,000 is not in a budget, whatever 10175100805 is, this is an over-budget situation?
It's not over-budget, correct?
No, it would not be over-budgeted.
So then our, it's within our.
It's in the budget.
Tree trimming budget.
Oh, but I thought you said early on you didn't want to use up all the tree trimming budget, so.
Exactly, yeah, so that's why we eliminate.
We're not.
See 40,000.
Okay. It was 60 to start, 60 to 80,000.
Okay, that's, I misunderstood what you said, okay.
Yeah.
And I'll just add, I know a lot of the other tree companies, since I know people that work for them, too, that do the storm damage for DTE, they've been called out even up until last weekend, still finishing up storm work, so getting anybody to come in to give us that much time, we're pretty lucky. So I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson. Support. Support by Councilmember Sage. Mayor Protem Salvia.
One quick question, you said you've spoken with Sue Neal, so you're coordinating this within the events that they have going on at Dinosaur Hill, like their spooky trail thing?
Yep.
Okay, great, thank you.
It's going to be really spooky now.
Mr. Clerk, the roll, please.
Mayor Bixson.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Salvia.
Yes.
Councilmembers Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Just real quick, though, I guess while Alex is still there, do we have somebody who just really makes sure that they are here for that eight hours a day? Not to be weird, but they are working a full day?
Oh, yeah, between Carl or.
Oh, okay.
Kyle.
Well, you just never know.
Oh, yeah.
Just on an ask.
Yep.
Okay.
I think Carl will make sure that they do. All right, Alec, you might as well stay up here for the next one. Consideration request to approve and authorize Bowen Paving to perform preventative maintenance on C lots 1, 4, 5, 6, 9, 13, and 14, but not 2, 3, I'm just kidding.
Did they miss it for you?
Yep, so actually a few months ago, a while back now, city went out and got quotes for doing some preventative maintenance treatment on some parking lots in the core downtown area. This preventative maintenance work being crack sealing, seal coating, and restriping. So if you look like what we did at the farmer's market parking lot this past spring, it's really meant to fill in the cracks, put a, you know, coat over the entire parking lot and give it a few more years to live before you can have to either mill and fill it or reconstruct it. So the lowest bidder that could get it done this fall was Bowen Paving, who's done a lot of work in the city and has been very good to work with. Their total amounts for the parking lots described for crack sealing, seal coating, and restriping, with an additional 10% contingency that we added, just to give us some buffer in case things happen we weren't anticipating, would be a total of $82,297.60. And the goal here is to do that work this fall, while then at a future date here soon, meeting with the PAC or the Parking Advisory Council.
Committee.
Committee, to go over kind of a three-to-five-year plan on how to go about financing. Some of the parking lots that need more of a reconstruct and mill and fill, and then also the city had Fishback Engineering do a report on the two parking decks, on kind of the current status and what needs to be done. And combined, it's that we're looking at about a million dollars for the two parking decks listed in the two studies. That's the engineering estimate, that's probably higher than what is going to be ended up needed. So we're working with some contractors right now to kind of bend their ear and be like, all right, what do you really think this is going to cost, and what do you think we can get, you know, due, and kind of a timeline for that. So we're hoping to have that at the next PAC meeting to go over kind of a three-to-five year plan for the areas that need more of a reconstruct.
Wow.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yeah, so I guess the question is, how soon out would some of this work need to be done on the deck, then?
It's not critical.
No, nothing, I didn't think so. I'm in them every day.
Five to seven years.
What?
Five, up to five to seven years.
So we're just pre-planning ahead to kind of get an idea, even though numbers.
Good stuff to add, like sealers and stuff, so you know, it's kind of the, like we're doing with the crack sealing and seal coating, it's, you know, the very base part of the maintenance to make sure you don't get to a spot where it's falling apart.
When was the last time we sealed the top deck? Because I remember it wasn't too long ago.
Yeah, it's not the top, it's the lower ones now.
The lower ones now.
Yeah, the tops are good for like 30 years.
Oh, okay, I knew we did one of them.
Yep, both of them.
Well, no, I meant one of the.
Oh, yeah, one layer on each one.
Yeah, one of the levels. Motion to approve?
Yeah, going forward, normally we, we see the bids or see, all I'm getting, all we're getting is the summary, I don't see the bid from Bowen Paving. So I would just ask that going forward, we can see the bids, you know, you worded it that was not the lowest bidder, however, the lowest bidder that would be able to perform the proposed work this fall. I'd like to see what the other bids were. I mean, we've always been very transparent, and recently these emails come to us just with the recommendation from administration without any of the backup, so I'd like to see that going forward, Alec.
I'll make note of that.
Actually, we'll get it to you this Friday in the management, I actually thought it was in here.
So would you like us to wait to vote, then?
You can if you want, but it doesn't matter.
To your point.
I'm supportive of this, and especially if we're going to get it done in the fall, but you know, I'm going on the sort of Councilmember Gould thing, keep it in America, I'm the same thing, I want to see three bids and, and make sure that we are looking at everything, not just a two-page memo with a map that is your recommendation. And again, it's not an affront to you, it's just, I like transparency, and I think our residents like that also.
Councilmember Sage.
Mr. Mayor, so to everyone else's point, so we can approve 206,000, but what's the timing, right? So I'm going to make an approval now with no date certain for every one of these projects, or what? Help me understand that.
Well, it was for 82,000.
Correct, yeah, I apologize. In the, in the estimate they gave us, it included a reconstruct of lot, I'm sorry, I forgot the number.
Yeah, lot 12.
12.
So we took that out.
And so we're now including that, so it would just be the, all the lots listed except for lot 12, that would require the crack sealing, seal coating, and restriping.
You can do that immediately, right?
Correct, yeah, they can do it in this fall.
This is the part they're doing immediately.
Oh, okay.
The other stuff's into the future.
Yep.
Sorry about the confusion there.
No, I wouldn't have approved it for that, because I knew we weren't ready for that to do that now.
Yep, so this is just using money we've already got in the budget for routine preventative maintenance work.
Okay, so we have a motion from Councilmember Peterson, is there support?
Support.
Support by Mayor Protem Salvia.
Mayor Bixson.
I want to say Madam Clerk, the roll, please. Badly. Mr. Clerk.
It's a force of habit.
Yes.
Mayor Bixson.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Salvia.
Yes.
Councilmembers Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Thank you, Alec. Next is a consideration of Nick Banda for City Manager employment agreement, just for the public. The city manager has always had, as long as I've been on the City Council, has a separate contract, is considered.
Thank you.
Considered a different employee, even though a lot of the same at-will employee things and things still, still apply, but we've always done a contract with the city manager, so I believe this is, you know, an appropriate thing for the, Nick Banda's one, to have a one-year contract with him.
I was going to ask Alec to come back up for this.
Makes it easy then for us. I have a.
Council.
Oh, I didn't know if the attorney, were you going to speak?
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. City Attorney.
I'm happy to, did put the memo together in there. This is a model after the former city manager agreement, and this is something that I've worked with Labor Council, Beth Young, and she and I put this together. It's a little different than the last contract, since that one wasn't for a specific term. The, excuse me, the August 22 meeting of City Council approved it for a one-year term, and obviously, we know things can change, so we did put in language that if Council and Mr. Banda want to extend that for whatever reason, that this doesn't prohibit that. He is also, would remain at-will, but there's certain things that are in there and not in there that are specific to Nick. He does, you know, currently, for instance, he doesn't take the city's medical, but he gets a pay-in lieu, so that, that continues on. He does, we did change the, or we did keep the 11% contribution to the retirement account and the $4,500 vehicle allowance. Mr. Banda does get a contribution in each of those categories now, but this brings it to the level of the former city manager. And so the former city manager compensation was about 127. As you know, the city just went through a wage and benefit study, and so the, this agreement, this was not by directive of anybody from City Council, other than we kind of took a look at what was in that range and considering Mr. Banda's experience, we felt that this was, 135 was a talking, talking point that Mr. Banda has agreed to. It still remains within the range that City Council has. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer it, but otherwise, it's, it's, it's very similar to the previous city manager contract.
Councilmember Albert.
Thank you, City Attorney Croft. I would guess that the part that's not included in the employment agreement, I don't have the previous one, we had a severance provision in there, because this is a finite one-year thing that, that's been excluded from the best I can see.
That's accurate, it didn't really lend itself to that, to including one. And Mr. Banda and I talked about that, that's not, that wasn't a surprise that it wasn't in there.
I, you know, again, the, the additional compensation based on Nick's not only tenure, but all his, the many hats he wears, I, I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposed employment agreement for Nick Banda, city manager.
I will enthusiastically support that. A motion by Councilmember Albrecht, support by Councilmember Sage, discussion, Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor. So, all right, so there's 11 months left on this contract if we sign tonight, so I would like to know, do we have a plan? Is there discussion of a plan moving forward, how we will then fill that position? Because that's, I assume this was a temporary one-year to keep us moving forward in a positive fashion, so.
Councilmember Sage, you had a comment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So to your point, Councilmember Peterson, I, I concur. So I'd like to make a motion that in six months' time, we actually engage a professional agency to find our next city manager, if, if it's a pleasure of this council, so I make that motion.
So we have the first motion to approve, maybe we should vote on that first and then bring up your motion, is that agreeable to council?[1622.03]
this one, I just, I think everyone agrees, but this would be a retroactive, Councilmember Peterson's 11-month comment, this would go back to his date of approval, so this would be...
Of course, but I know that I was referring to 11 months moving forward.
I just want to make sure everyone knew that it would be retro to August 22.
Before we vote, though, thank you, so, I guess, see, I just want a plan, knowing what we're going to do moving forward, it's not that I, you know, if city manager Banda wants to stay on another year, and that's the pleasure of council, I mean, how are we going to get to that point, because I did it backwards, thinking that come mid-April, beginning of May, we're going to have to put out for, you know, get this process started, if that was the case, so, is there like a...
Well, that's what we're going to talk about.
Well, I know, but I don't want to approve something not knowing, because this actually has in there that he can continue, it can be continued, but to me, it was, it was just a vote for a one, I mean, it was a vote to have him for one year, so that was, but we put in a contract that it could be extended, and I see the conflict with having this now come up as a, you know, what do we do next?
Councilmember Sage, you had a follow-up?
Right, so I'll clarify my motion, after we make a vote on the first motion to approve the employment agreement.
So, so you want, what you're saying, you want to vote first?
Yeah, let's vote on the first one, and then, the second motion that I've made, I will add clarification to that, what...
Okay.
Okay, so the motion on the floor is to approve the one-year contract to city manager Nick Banda?
Correct.
Okay, further comment by Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, so, but it's not written that way, so, is it a solid one-year contract, because that's what we're voting on, the contract written does not say that, and I don't want it to be a stickler, but it's, the contract's a contract.
Mr. City Attorney?
It does say for a period of one year.
Right, with option to renew.
Well...
With our option.
Yeah, it is definitely a one-year, a one-year agreement, and, but we wanted to add the flexibility, if city council and Mr. Banda wanted to extend it for whatever purpose, or for whatever reason, I should say, then, you wouldn't have to have a whole nother employment agreement prepared, it would just continue as for whatever term that you wanted to, but it definitely is, it definitely does have a one-year term.
No, and I'm fine, I wanted that for the public, since they've seen it and wanted clarification, so, then I'm fine, I'm...
Okay, so then, Mr. Clerk, the role on this subject.
Mayor Bixson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Salvia?
Yes.
Councilmembers Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yep.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Okay, so that contract's approved, congratulations, Nick. Councilmember Sage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, so, there are two things that we do on council, and I've had the pleasure of doing it three times, serving here, we balance the budget, right? And the other thing is deliberating about succession for any position in city administration. The most important of those, and many of us will never have an opportunity to pick a city manager, right? So, that's very critical for this body to deliberate and make a good decision on, so, that's why I made that motion, then, I want, at a point in time, then, we get ahead of this process, right? So, we hire someone to actually find candidates, and then we deliberate, let's not rush this, let's make it real for all of us, so it matters for everybody that votes for all of us, so, that's why I made the motion.
Okay, so what's the motion again?
To engage, within six months' time, we have agenda item on a council meeting to hire an agency to find our replacement city manager.
Support. Okay, so, motion by Sage, support by Councilmember Gould, discussion, Councilmember Albrecht.
I'm not in support of the motion, I think, when we appointed Nick at the August 22nd meeting, I went on record to talk about succession planning, Mayor Protem supported the motion and also talked about succession planning, I don't want to engage another agency to spend money like we did, which really didn't work for this prior city manager search, I would rather have administration do what we asked them to do a month ago, which is to begin the succession planning process, not only for potential candidates like Finance Director Maggio, but for other positions in city administration, we need to send out a message to our staff that succession planning is alive and well in the city of Rochester, and that you don't have to go somewhere else to get promoted into a position, so, I don't want to wait six months, or within six months, and bring in another agency to tell us what to do, I think we need to do that right now, and I would rather have city manager Banda come back to us within the next 30 days or so, with a plan of what we're going to do to groom others within administration, we have, you know, other positions where we have long-tenured people in city administration, and in three areas that I can think of right off the top of my head, that we will probably have potential openings through retirements or so forth, so, I'd like to see what we're doing with our internal people, what kind of courses are we sending them to, what kind of seminars are we sending them to, what kind of certifications are we getting for them, what kind of things are we doing that we, and I agree with Councilmember Sage, that is incumbent upon us as city council, but we're not doing that right now, we're already a month behind, and again, I, you know, city manager Banda's got a lot on his plate, you know, we've talked about possibly adding a deputy city manager, again, that, let city manager Banda come to us with that recommendation, as to what he thinks the city needs, then I'd rather look at that than put a motion together with saying, we're going to bring in another agency or group, so I will vote against that motion, and I would rather, and I'm not going to make a motion, I'd rather ask administration to come to us with a succession planning plan for not only the city manager position, which, you know, we just approved a one-year contract that goes through August 31st of 2023, but other positions on city administration that we need to get some bench strength going.
Councilmember Peterson?
Thank you, Councilmember Albrecht, I happen to agree, because we've already spent the money to do that, we did not follow that process, and I would prefer to see the city administration and our newly-elected city manager be the one to determine how to move this city forward, I mean, he knows it better than anyone, he's had to, he's been here a long time, maneuvering and keeping the city moving forward, and I think it's in our best interest to continue mentoring and helping guide those within, so we don't lose the employees that we just worked really hard to keep by doing a wage and compensation study and bringing them all up to their, you know, the highest potential salaries that they should have, to keep them marketable here in our own community without losing them, so, I would not be in support of a motion that would wait six months, because then I also don't think it would be fair, in the event that city manager Banda came to us and said that it would probably be another year of training and guiding to get the succession planning moving forward, and then we would be without that option, if that was the case, of, you know, keeping him to do that, do so.
Councilmember Gould?
Yeah, thanks, I will support that motion, I hope, and assumed, I guess, that we are doing the mentorship that we talked about, there's no reason why we would delay that for six months to begin it, we should be doing that all the time, I can't imagine narrowing our search pool to 20 or 30 people for a job as important as this, and I would hope that through the mentorship that would happen during that year, that we would have extremely qualified people that could compete with anybody this outside firm would be able to bring in.
Come, Mayor Protem Salvia?
One more, so, I will support the motion, but only on the basis that I believe we need to address what failed in the process the last time, that's my real intent there, I'm okay with hiring another outside search firm, I don't know if it needs to be within six months, or eight months, or nine months, or two months, but I, we really need to address why did it fail, why did our process fail?
Councilmember Trent?
Yeah, I'm glad Nancy said that, council, Protem said that, Mayor Protem, because I came in at the end of this process, and I too, I support this motion, but I would like to know what didn't work, because that'll help us do it better the next time, that's the way I run my business, every single failure I've had, and there were only a couple.
Councilmember Peterson?
So, I guess to reflect on that, so, we hired a company to bring us candidates, we chose a candidate, the candidate then declined, but we never moved forward with the other candidate that was part of that pool that was brought forth from a company that we hired and spent almost $10,000 on, so, to me, I saw that what we did is we did not engage that company to let us know what should have been the next step, instead, it was just arbitrarily decided to ask someone who's been sitting here acting as a city manager, because that's what he's been doing for the past seven years anyhow, as a deputy city manager, and we did not follow through with that process, so, I think that was, that was the only thing that I saw that did not go forward, is, the company we hired and spent the money on was not then addressed to give us direction as to what should have happened next, if anything, or if we should just go back out and ask for more people, but we never even gave the person who was, you know, selected as our number two by this body, that option at all, or discussion regarding that.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Banda?
I think I can help here, so, I think these are two separate items, and I think it'll make you feel better that I, a month ago, I heard what you told me, and we already started that process about the mentoring ship, and looking for opportunities for not just Anthony, but Alec, and Marcy, and Patrick's going, I'm sending these people to the places they need to be right now, they should have been going before, I don't know why they didn't, but they didn't, so, they're already signed up and have gone to some of these, whether it's a conference, whether it's a module of learning, already, so, wasn't going to wait for, you told me to start doing it, so we started doing it immediately, we're trying to get the best, so we're working, actually, James is coming back for free, because of our relationship, so, Joelle and I run by these classes and say, do you think this is where the disconnect was, for the candidate internally, or anybody internally, that would like to move up to the next step, whether it's within their own division, or to a higher level like city manager, so we've come to that consensus, and we're already taking place, that's already taking place, and offering those people, no one's said no to anything yet, so I think that's really good, I think, I think it's incumbent on me, and it should have been on us before, to get, like, the Mayor Albrecht, or Mark, I think you said it, that, there's a bunch of positions that are ripe right now for people to go on, we have to have that ready, and the willingness wasn't there to pull those scabs off, but we're not afraid of it, we've, we had a decommissioning of our own staff for three days after what happened, I think that we, through me, can tell you how, what did go wrong, or how we could do it better, it's not even what went wrong, how can we do it better, so it's not incumbent for you, for staff, for anybody, we already made a matrix of what we thought, where we disconnected, the city side and the council side, so, we can, I'll write a report, if you will, to you guys, in 30 days, not even a problem, so, so we don't put the next consultant if it is, or ourselves doing it, I don't want to put them in that same trick bag that, they have to guess what we're going to do, we need to know what our process is, what our thought process is, what we're looking for, and what we're going to do to follow up if the first pick doesn't go right, we need to have that set in stone, it was a bit of a panic, it seemed like, and understandably, but we can fix that, and we want to fix that, we want every single person on the staff, that the next few days after that, said, all right, that's done, how are we going to never have this happen again, then what are we going to do to make sure, we're all not going to be here, we all care, let's make sure we get the process right, so, we can literally write a nice report that'll say, this is our thoughts, for you guys to consider, how to make sure that we don't have that snag again, I think that's totally understandable, we owe you that, I think.
Thank you.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Again, that, and thank you, you know, because Councilmember Gould said he assumed something was happening, I'm glad you clarified that, it was happening, and I'd like to have that continue to be the case, you mentioned some names, I would also like to see courses for Brian, you know, again, you just didn't mention his name, I just want to make sure he's included in there also, again, the motion today, I don't want to commit ourselves to hiring a, will we need a search firm to do this again? Absolutely, I'm for that, but I don't know why we need to have a motion tonight to engage a search firm within six months, I think this is something that if we hear from city manager Banda, that here's what's going on internally, you know, it's the first of the year, I'm not going to, you know, August, I'm really retiring for sure, then let's look at getting bids for search firms, whether it's going to be James's firm again, or somebody else's firm again, I just, I just think it was premature to commit to that at a meeting here in September.
Councilmember Sage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate your comments, Mark, so, I kind of have a different perspective, or unique perspective, from the rest of all of us that serve here, so, I've had multiple times to serve here, but now, it hasn't been consecutive, right? But I can tell you this, the two times, the last two times I've served, including current, the one thing we've always talked about is succession planning, and we've done nothing to address it, so, that's why I made the motion, let's get in front of this process, engage it, and do the right thing, as opposed to your comment as well, it might have been haphazard, when we did, we were kind of forced into it, so I want to get in front of it, that's all I'm saying.
Councilmember Peterson?
Well, and it's unfortunate that the seven years prior, the way the city was led, we were not able to do that, and that led to more, more issues that we didn't need, I do think, though, that making a motion tonight is like, okay, Nick, hurry up and just give us this information, so we can get rid of you come January, because we're going to find someone else to fill that spot, I mean, that's how I see that, is making a motion tonight, because it's not giving him an opportunity to even come back and do what he's already said, he stated he was starting to do for succession planning, and then proceed to give us insight as to what he sees, and what might be issues moving forward or not, instead of just putting together, you know, like, bring us that plan, so we can move forward and hire, with that potential thought.
Councilmember Trent? I'm sorry, Councilmember Trent?
That's okay.
Yeah, I, these are, these can happen, and at the same time, that you can look, you can make this motion, and maybe we change it, and I don't know, I don't know if it happens, but, but later, we might see a different point of view, but right now, you can do two things at once, you can ask for a search firm to be, you know, ahead of schedule here to get us ready for it, for city manager, but there's also succession planning that can happen at the same time, we're not hiring five people with this search firm, we're hiring one, and that's what I see here, I think we're talking about two different things.
So, I'd just like to say, yes, we're talking about the city manager, we're not talking about any other position, Nick has told us he was going to retire, Nick wants to retire within a year, so he says now, it is incumbent upon us to find a new city manager, we can't wait till one day before Nick retires, we need to be planning for a search, so to me, I will support this motion, and this is exactly what we should be doing, this is our main role as a city council, is to hire a city manager, and we need to be planning for it, I agree with the Mayor Protem, that we need to look at what went wrong, but what went wrong, we'll work on that, but it's incumbent upon this city council to hire a city manager, so, Mr. Clerk, the role, please.
Could the motion be restated, please?
So, Mr. Sage, you want to restate the motion?
Sure, so, I would like, in six months' time, that we have on a council agenda, an opportunity to approve and support a firm to find our next city manager.
And that was supported by Councilmember Gould, and I guess I would ask city manager, city administration to have a few firms, potentially, to do that.
Mr. Clerk?
Mayor Bixson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Salvia?
Yes.
Councilmembers Albrecht?
No.
Gould?
Yes.
Peterson?
No.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I ask a question?
Mr. Councilperson Peterson?
Thank you. Sorry, this is up tonight. Yeah, it's okay, so, I just want to restate what was stated earlier, that when this conversation started, it was about us having clear deliberation, communication, et cetera, but we are just as divided as we were when we voted for the last city manager that we spent, that we went through a firm for and spent money on, I don't see how...
Well, and I, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, so, I just, you know, we talk about things not showing up on an agenda and things like that, this wasn't on it, this wasn't part of anything that was for tonight, this was, we were approving a contract for tonight, for the new city manager, and right after we, there's a motion made to, vote to, go out and look for a new city manager in six months, just, I don't know, it doesn't sound as good as it did the last time, and I see that's where the process went wrong, and will probably continue going wrong again, because these are not being thought out, they're being last minute at the table, without other information provided, so, thank you.
Okay, on to receipt of the check register report, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, sir, there are two, 915 and 922, if any questions, we can answer them.
Okay, thank you, now on to reports of your boards and commissions, first, there's a report from Rara, Mr. Albrecht, Councilmember Albrecht, is there anything else?
We met on September 14th, you heard everything tonight, so I'll move on.
All right, next is a report from the City Beautiful Commission, Councilmember Trent is agreeing to give that report until we find a city liaison person.
I know, I'm so disappointed, nobody wants to join us, it only takes a little over an hour, and we can do it hybrid. It only takes a little over an hour and we can do it hybrid. Anyway, we still are doing the meetings hybrid and we will continue. However, I have a few items of interest on a lighter note, that the, there's been a partnership with the Stony Creek Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution with the City Beautiful Commission and the Rochester Pollinators to put in a remembrance garden in the cemetery. And it is for the tomb of the unknown soldier. Nick Banda has been working on this diligently. We've moved the bench around several times for the past year, or it seems like a year. And so we have found a perfect location for it and what is consistent of, what consists of a remembrance garden is a white roses, a flag, seating and the tomb itself or the plaque, it's actually not a tomb, it's a plaque, it's 11 by 17 and it's in honor of the unknown soldiers that is the same as it is in Washington DC. So the garden will be planted in a couple of weeks. The Community Foundation of Greater Rochester, I'll do a shout out and a thank you to them for purchasing the bench and we will have a commemorative ceremony for it on the 15th with the Daughters of the American Revolution joining us. And I do like to have these types of partnerships with, with organizations that are, have been in the city and I, I like that happening and I'm, I'm very proud of this. Nick Banda has been working with the Tree Committee, I think, with the Sugar Maple Grove and so it's great time to plant trees, apparently, is in the fall. So keep that in mind when you're thinking of planting trees. So we are going to go ahead with the Sugar Maple Grove, which is by the community garden and we're going to have benches there as well. And the third thing is, we have a good neighbor award that we, we ask people to, you know, nominate their good neighbors when they do good things. So please keep that in mind when you think of all the, your, your good neighbor doing good things. You can always nominate them on the website. So pretty much that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Peterson.
Yes, thank you, so two things, so do we need somebody to sit as city beautiful liaison? I thought you already appointed somebody.
No, I said, I asked last if anybody was interested to let me know and nobody let me know.
Somebody's speaking.
Yes, Madam Clerk?
We did receive one application that I'll forward on to council over the next few days, so we do have one pending application for the City Beautiful Commission. We also have another application for the retirement board as well, so I'll forward both of those out and get that on the agenda for the next meeting.
But we're talking about the council liaison.
Oh, okay.
So that's what, so if anybody's interested, let me know.
Okay, Mayor, I'll sit there.
For one hour on a Zoom?
Whatever, whatever it is. I was on there for like seven years, so.
Okay.
But I do have a question.
Yes.
So, okay, so when, and it's to the good neighbor award, so when I sat on City Beautiful and city manager Nick will recall, that was put together after the residential property task force was started, we put this together and brought back City Beautiful so this here could help recognize businesses and homes that beautified the neighborhoods, et cetera. That was what the original intention was of that.
I've been fighting over the years.
Okay.
I'll bring it up speed.
Oh, there's another thing.
Councilmember Trent?
Yeah, there's also, we're working on revising the mission statement and that will be, I think it's going to be brought forth next month by the chairwoman, Rachel Williams.
Okay, thank you. Next is a report from the Paint Creek Trailway Commission, councilmember Sage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, a couple, couple, two, three items. We have submitted our application to be designated as a pure Michigan trail, so we hope to hear that by the end of the year. I'm pretty sure we're kind of locked into that, which would be good. The Liberty Bridgewater was a huge success. We garnered $2,853 in donations from that event, which is great. We had a discussion and report from, so there's an ancillary group that, that it's in parallel to the trail, the Friends of the Paint Creek Trail. So they've been debating their sustainability going forward and obviously we're going to provide support to that. So I would implore anybody watching, if you have an inclination to volunteer for a board or commission, that would be a wonderful effort on your part for the Friends of the Paint Creek Trail. And then the last thing is, the trail's website has some problems and I know we had some problems with our website in the past. Who do we use? Because they would love to talk to the city about how to fix their website.
So it was Lauren that worked here and I'm not so sure, that's Megan and Holly's backgrounds, so Lauren happened to be a webmaster, so.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll talk to you offline.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. Next is a report from the DDA, councilmember Trent?
Yes, a couple of items of interest. The first one is, there was the newly created Bill La Puma Community Spirit Award and they recognize the first two awardees, which is to recognize a member of our downtown that embodies the community pride, spirit and love of Rochester that Bill La Puma demonstrated every single day. And the nominees must be downtown property owners, downtown business owners or downtown employees. It's a really nice award. So Renee Perkins from Funky Frog and Linda Gallagher from South Street Skate Shop, man, who, both of them are managers and owners of these shops and they won the award, so it was very nice. Then Kristi gave a presentation of the next 17 events and I will not repeat that, but all of them, but I will implore you to go to the Rochester, Downtown Rochester, mi.com website to view them. But we start next week on Thursday with Post and Downtown Rochester on October 6th. It's really a fun event, all the stores do different on a theme and they have, these people are being mannequins and they're volunteer mannequins in the storefronts, so it's very fun. All the way down through the Snowman Stroll, which is December 1 through January 15th and all the other fun things that I'm sure you know of, but it's quite, it's going to be quite an eventful downtown through mid-January. And that is my reports.
Good.
Just real quick, I do know that Kristi did receive in a lot of new downtown DDA swag that she has down there. I think everybody will love it because it's really awesome stuff and it's all in the holiday spirit. Sorry, Mayor.
Very good, thank you. Next is a report from the Planning Commission. I will do that, we had one meeting, a second meeting of the month and we talked about zoning issues, so we're trying to get through zoning issues that come from the master plan so then can we can bring them to city council. We spent a long time on the downtown and one of the things that we looked at was, right now it's zoned as three stories, 35 feet maximum and we're looking at changing it to two stories, 35 feet maximum. So to make sure that some builder doesn't start the process of getting downtown a lot bigger than it's supposed to be, but we're still looking at some of the details and of course it will eventually come to city council for approval.
Is that only on Main Street?
Just on the Main Street core.
It's interesting.
But we, we spent a long time on that.
The devil's in the detail.
The devil's in the details. And so we're going to continue to have meetings to talk about zoning issues, but, and one last thing that I put on here is the solaronics issue, not issue, but site plan approval. Because of some people not being able to make a meeting is now pushed to the November meeting. So that's going to be November 7th and we've let, or the city manager was going to let the people who live on Ludlow who are very interested in this, let them know because there's a lot of community interest in that. Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Nope, nope, good. So I have a question though regarding the zoning, maybe for administration then, is there anything regarding short-term rentals being part of the zoning?
So, interestingly you brought that up, so we just got an update from a bunch of lobbyists, not, not knowing that we are against what they're lobbying for, whatever, that it's going to, we're sticking to our guns, all the communities in this area, especially Southeast Michigan have said, we have our own laws, we treat them as rentals, we're not budging, you tell us that you're overriding us before we're going to change anything. We talked to Jeff and so we're clear on how we do it, so we're not going to touch that until it's forced from hire.
You're talking about Airbnbs?
Yes.
Yes, regular short-term rentals, anybody having their own, well, and I'm very much working with them at, at the state level too, so I wanted to make sure where we were with that here.
So we're cognizant of the, the bill and following it and our stance is, it's a rental is a rental. Follow the rules in the rental thing, which is every time you change a tenant, you have to come in and reregister it. And we have the right to, to inspect it if we want to. You can self, so if you went to a daily rental, it's impossible. So we're not, we're, we're walking that fine line, just making sure we don't step over our bounds of what we're allowed to do, but we have a rental ordinance that we've had for years, we're just following that.
Okay. Councilmember Peterson, do you have that bill number? Yeah, I think it's 4722.
Okay, is it the state?
Yep, yeah. Well, we've been working on it for seven years, so that's how long this has been in the process, so.
Keep saying they're going to get it through.
Well, it's push, it's almost through, yeah.
Okay, next is a report from the Historical Commission, councilmember Sage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was out of town on business and unfortunately I was not able to attend the Historical Commission, but I will provide, I will find out and provide an update for the next meeting. Thank you.
And if they could, they could change your name and who's Kay Johnson?
Yep, Kay's been a member of.
Been in there for a long time.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Next there is a report from the Tree Committee, councilmember Albrecht.
We met on September 20th and we started with an update on the tree fund. We were able to, the Letica Street tree planting of the 27 trees was able to come out of the city street planning budget, so it didn't negatively impact the tree fund. When we have fines in the tree fund, the people who are fined have a year to remediate the situation by offsetting the, the, the tree fund that Mount they own by planting trees. So we have basically around 30,000 in arrears that could materialize a year from now, but if they again plant trees to offset that, that number would be less. So we have around $30,000 in the tree fund right now. We then talked about the Rochester 100, where we are on that. So, so far in the ground, we've planted 16 street trees, 27 Letica Drive. We will, as I think councilmember, councilmember Trent said, fall's a good time for planting, so we will be doing 31 additional fall street tree plantings now. The Sugar Maple Grove, which was previously reported to have 40 sugar maples, when we staked it out, we realized based on the growth and how big they'll become that we'll only have room for 27. The Sugar Maple Grove will then have a 20 by 20 gazebo, picnic tables and benches, all of which are money, making opportunities for people to sponsor those benches. And then we're in discussion with the OPC to add nine trees to their property as part of our Rochester 100, so if all those come to fruition, which we are pretty optimistic, we'll have 110 trees planted, so we'll achieve our goal as we've had before. We talked previously about the, the storm and again, Nick and the department have been overwhelmed with permits to remove trees that, you know, where branches came down or the trees died, so that's been a lot higher than it was, it was in the past. We then, based on the success of the Letica tree planting and the Sugar Maple Grove, we had a robust discussion on where would be the next tree planting areas and we had some ideas as, as, as the committee. We talked about some locations, but we felt that it would be better have our residents let us know where those are going to be. So I'll be drafting a letter that Nick will get out to the HOAs and then we'll put it out on the website where residents can say, hey, you know, we, you saw what we did in Letica Drive, you saw what we did on the Sugar Maple Grove, where else in the city should we, you know, plant trees? You know, we've had people talk about First Street along the cemetery row there where, you know, we've, we've had a lot of luck planting trees. I think the spirits underneath are killing our trees, so, but we talked about that. We then got into a discussion with the Arbor Day Foundation. Arbor Day Foundation is giving out, giving away free trees, neighboring communities are taking part of it. Nick was on both sides of the fence on that initially, but then we felt that even though these are sapling trees that many may not make it, that it's better than nothing, so we're going to participate in that. And for Arbor Day 2023, which will be next spring, we are going to go back to what we used to do and partner with the schools. We picked McGregor Elementary School as our, as our school of choice this time where we'll, we're going to get the students involved, we're going to have them help us pick a mascot for the Tree Committee. No, it's not going to be me. And then they'll help design the, the mascot and then we are going to reach out to you, Marilyn, potentially to help us turn that drawing into a, a reality so that we have a mascot. But we have Melissa Weiss, who is a very passionate member of our Tree Committee, who's also a, you know, very good marketing person, she does this for leader dogs for the blind, so she's really going to get a hold of this and make that event, you know, bring it back to the kids. You know, I told the story of my daughter, when I moved here, we, we, she was nine years old and I got a little sapling of a evergreen that I planted in my backyard outside her window. It is now towering against the house taller than the, than my house, my two-story house, so it's, those little saplings do grow if you take good care of them. So we want to, want to do stuff like that, we'll have activities for the kids, have a contest, maybe have a pizza party for the kids there and make it a, you know, like last year, we, we did our tree planting in the municipal park, many of you were there. Prior two years, we did it in the, in the cemetery, so we want to go back to the schools and plant at McGregor Elementary. So we'd also, since we are the city of murals, we wanted to sort of talk about maybe our next mural could be a focus on trees. You know, we've done butterflies, we've done fish and herons and everything else like that, so that's, we are a tree city for the eighth year in a row, so we just wanted to put the word out there that we would like to maybe get a mural for, for, dedicated to trees and we even talked about possibly doing it in, in the behind of the, behind the community house by the park. So again, it was a great meeting, we hadn't had a meeting in a while, so there was a lot of ideas that came up. That's it.
Yep, thanks. I have a sapling in my front yard as well that is towering to the other trees, so they do, those do grow. Question though regarding the trees, I just lost it. Nah, the tree plantings, that's fine, not important, I guess, right now.
Okay, thank you. Next is a report from.
I'll add to that. I'm sorry, councilmember Sage. So, because we are a tree city and since we get free saplings, so who in city administration wants to start the first bonsai tree here at city hall? And then could we actually expand that to the schools here? Where we.
Marcy.
That's Marcy?
I didn't see her raise her hand.
I thought you raised your hand.
I, I saw her raise her hand. Motion approved.
Okay.
All right. Take care of the Tree Committee.
Noted, noted.
Bonsai.
All right, next is a report from the Grant Committee, councilmember Mayor Protem Salvia.
Thank you, I'll start out while Anthony comes forward to get ready. Anthony? Come on down, Anthony, you're the next contestant for the Grant Committee. So while he's coming forward, I promised him I would give a little preamble to this. You have in the packet an agenda as well as a presentation that's been put together. I think in the spirit of giving credit to where credit is due, thank you, Marcy, for making some pretty pictures for all of us to look at and helping. making some pretty pictures for all of us to look at and helping us put our thoughts together. Grants are a great opportunity for the city. I think every council member has questions about grants and thoughts about grants, so we want to take this time to give a brief update on where the Grant Committee has been working, the grants that are being pursued, the areas that I'll say we're dreaming about, where we would like to get a grant. We may not know about grant opportunities today, but maybe in the future we can find some. And so Anthony, I'll let you take us through the presentation.
Thank you. Just an update for council, it's been a while since we've had a formal one here. So there's a few things that Mayor Protem Salvia wanted me to cover in the presentation tonight. One part of that is just understanding what the process is and how this works. So for opportunities and projects, there's kind of a couple ways that this can happen. We are always listening to what's being said and discussed, talked about locally and regionally. So we start kind of in our head forming kind of like a list of what's kind of happening, what might fit, what might not fit. Then we have the grants that are actually coming out, right? And so what we try to do is we try to marry those things, okay? It's easy to get money, but it doesn't mean just getting money is good because you don't want an airport in the city of Rochester, but probably find a grandport, right? So it's got to make sense for why you're doing it and what you're looking at. So from conversations, meetings, the subcommittees and groups from whether it's CBC or Historical, anything that gets talked about, we try to capture some of those highlighted, highlight those points, so we can start kind of either, either both searching actively for them and then when things come up that we can actually say, hey, that match, this could match for this, this item over here that Historical Commission once mentioned last year, so maybe, maybe we should revisit that and see if that fits in that. We also get it from the resident requests as well, things we've heard in the past like dog parks and those sort of things where we try to, you know, listen, hear and record and watch those. And then of course, you're familiar with the priority projects list, that was the one that was started a year or so ago and has been successful in basically being the marketing for the projects in the city. So that's the one where we have the, the deck with the one project per page with a quick summary picture and that. In this effort, there's a bunch of pieces of this. So on the active searching for us side, we give the list of projects and they take all of those, they, we have a quick 10, 20 second talk on each one, so they can kind of figure out what the highlight, the keywords are going to be, and then they start searching. First one there, National League of Cities, that's the one that we're tied up with that is mainly focused on, it is only focused on federal funds, specifically ARPA, but they can, they are allowed to branch a little bit outside of ARPA. And the reason it's strictly ARPA is that's what's funding this. So ARPA money in the administration section has been allocated funds to the National League of Cities to help communities like us find grants and help support the grants. They provide access to a data analyst, a financial analyst and a grant writer too. So that's kind of that focus and they have the full list of everything. Lexipol is one that's, they're the ones that got us the safer grant in the past, that's probably one of the higher notable ones, and they've gotten us quite a few smaller ones as well. Their primary focus is public safety, police, fire, safety grants, preparedness grants, technical rescue, things that are more emergency related. They do have other sections they cover and we have had, as an example, we have a meeting with, I believe it's Wednesday this week, on a couple of skate park grant opportunities that they found that they want to review with us to see if that matches or not. It's not public safety, but they, the research piece is more in their alley and they'll literally say, well, we found these, it's not our wheelhouse, but here's some grants, you know, go, you know, research them maybe a little more yourself and see if you can apply or we'll try to find you some people that can do that. And then we also have the contractors, so all of our engineers, you know, they live and breathe in some of these areas, water and sewer, roads, they're aware of what other communities are getting, the item that was earlier, the, for the planning, for the looping and that, that was ones that they found and applied for because they just know what they are, right? They find one for one, it fits all the communities and they can keep going. Linda Davis Kirksey is the one that's been successful for us for two grants, the trust fund grant and then also with Representative Slotkin for the, the two sites for playground equipment and the all abilities park area. So her main area focus is really the state, specifically land and water and DNR and trust fund, those, like the state, that's really her wheelhouse. She does others as well. I've gotten a lot of direction and things that we've been researching, like she's applied, Wilson Foundation, some skate park items as well, so everyone's kind of working together. And then we also have the push notification side is what I'll call it, so that's the stuff the state, the county push out. So they'll just send a blast out like, hey, we're doing grants on, say ADA access or something, you know, whatever that item is, they push that out and that's where we kind of can look at it, see, okay, does this fit, does it make sense or not? And yes, we will or no, we won't apply for them. So that's kind of the support people and how that works. Also within the city contractors, that's obviously department heads too, everybody's very familiar with their department in that field, so there's also what they bring to it on what that looks like and where fundings are. For the most part, it's just, it's just part of the job, right? I mean, there's a lot of times where we just, we apply for things, we get mini grants all the time for small projects and that, so it's just something that's just part of the ongoing support on it. Some of the large items that we have applied for, excuse me, the, there's a list that we see up here, you know, obviously skate park, community house. So we found that we had eligibility with MAC for up to 100,000 city application, 100,000 for community house application. So of the 1.3-ish million, we got a couple hundred thousand potentially as a, as a potential to apply, not, not received funds yet. That next application period's June 1st is when it's due next year. So a lot of that is just planning around the grants because most of them are annual, especially with the state. And then some, some of the other ones are quarterly, but we keep monitoring on those. And then the car charging stations, front porch project, park paths, soil erosion, which has been a topic in the state for a while, and then the trail connections, SCBA packs for the fire department and of course splash, so these are just some of the ones that we have listed that are in the more extensive list. This is the more extensive list. I'm not going to go through, read every single one of them, it's just a quick highlight in notes on just some of the other ones. And there's kind of the first section is the grants researched and applied for, and then the next one we have, you know, grants that we're looking at, awarded but not completed and then completed. So those are just some of the categories on how that works. So, you know, we've talked about, you know, for instance, that was on there, the fire department SCBA packs, we know we're getting to that end of life, we've applied, were turned down for two years. There's still about 100 million left for the feds to disperse for this year. We have not gotten the notification either way yet, though I do keep checking that daily because they post who's getting the awards and so we're hoping to be able to secure that one. Park paths are always ongoing and that's been a lot of the focus on some of the federal funds and state too, is its walkability, its paths, its sidewalks, its safety, as recreation-focused items, which regionally were set up very well to, pointwise to be able to get a lot of those. So we're always combing through on those items. So I will pause with the information dump that I just ran through.
Thank you, Anthony.
What questions do you have for me?
I have one.
Councilmember Sage?
So one of the projects is Elizabeth Park and I know we're requesting a grant, I don't know, I don't know if we're going to get that much to put playground equipment, but I think on the books, and it's been 10 years now, maybe not 10.
10 years, yep.
But doesn't the Rewald organization owe us some improvement to that park? Could we help them?
I'll have to defer to City Manager Bandana on that one.
So two people do, Mosheri and Rewald. So Rewald's in for the sidewalks. We had a master plan drawn up for there, but it was for a passive park, a five census park. So sidewalks and then a water feature and the landscaping. Mosheri, if you ever pulled his permit for Blossom Mills, was going to do the second half. So recently, the surrounding neighborhood has talked to us about, that's cute, but we have a lot of kids now that live around here, wouldn't it be better to change your direction on that park to go to more of a, bring back the turtle and the dinosaur and all that? So, so that we could talk to the folks that were committed to do that and see if they would be willing to flip their donation to that. So I think that, I need direction from council on, we have to decide do we want to change that because we committed before to be a passive park because there's no parking there, right? But we can certainly take that direction during goals and objectives, we're going to talk about that.
Well, I'll make a motion now to make it an active park.
All support, yeah.
Alls I need is a nod.
Okay, nod. The moms want to bring their baby strollers down there, they don't need parking.
We agree with that 100%. And we haven't spent a lot of money on engineering on the sidewalks yet because we had Rewald, we're going to have him engineer it. He said, why don't you wait till you decide what you want that park to be because everybody can see it changing. So done, we'll take care of that.
Ever since Bill Bowman, when the last turtle left the building.
I just want to swing for the kids.
Anything, any other questions? Thank you, Anthony.
Absolutely.
Great report. Hold on, as the, as the Grant Committee person here on council, just really wanted to thank Anthony and city administration for all their work on this. It's a lot of work to apply for any of these grants. Clearly partnerships between the organizations, whether it be the library or all the different departments, Dinosaur Hills, so a lot of work goes into these, you know, it's, you gotta, need to know how to make the application, when to make the application, and they're doing a great job trying to get as much money as we can into Rochester, so thank you.
Thank you for the transparency on the grant process, that was very helpful.
Good, good, good. You're welcome, absolutely.
All right, is there any public comment out there? Any further?
I do not see any other public waiting to speak, Your Honor.
All right. Onto General Miscellaneous, Mr. City Manager.
I just have one quick update on Helen Street. So we're getting near the end, the people have been very patient, we've had some weird snafus in this project with the post office. They decided to stop mail and not tell us that they were stopping mail because somebody tripped, one of their postmen tripped and they decided not to tell us they were stopping mail. People didn't complain for some reason, so we're getting through that. So if everything goes right, the sidewalks all the way to First Street will be completed by Wednesday, by Wednesday, a week from Wednesday. Paving, week from Wednesday. Paving will then start, they're already prepping the road because they got a lot of the sidewalks done, I think they're almost down to Fourth Street, so they need to come down the hill now, but they're already prepping the road. So paving would start October 1st, take three days and they're out of there. So the good, the people on Helen have been great. We communicate really well with them, we send stuff out all the time, they're not afraid to call. Alex's crew, they've, they've been on top of it, Jason's been on top of it. So for, that's a tough project with the grades there and trees and you name it, so, but the end is in sight and they're ahead of schedule and I think we're going to be okay there. So look for paving, the first, we went with both schools, communicated with the schools and the church, so we make sure we haven't interfere with them. Focus on Alice, I know, and you live there, you know what that's been like. So it's, it's a tight workspace there, but we're just about done.
Looks good though.
It does look good.
They've done a really good job.
Very good, thank you. Mr. City Clerk, anything tonight?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do not have anything, though I believe the City Clerk has an election update.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, Your Honor, we have received the ballots for the November election. We're in the process of testing machines and we will be ready to send out the 2,500 absentee ballots that have been requested by this Thursday, so people should start watching for those to come in the mail.
For the applications for the ballots, right?
No, no, the actual ballots.
Actual ballots, okay.
So, yeah, we have sent out two mailings. The first mailing was in May, had a dual application for August and November, and then we sent out an additional one at the beginning of September for those people that hadn't turned in the one from the prior mailing. So those are applications.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilmember Gould?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Mayor Protem Salvia?
Yes, thank you. So Gleewa and the pipe situation, I saw September 19th bulletin, it sounds like it's now October 6th. Just for the public, I know we, not doing alerts on this, but maybe as we get closer to this, this switch, maybe we want to update or just kind of want your thoughts on that?
Yeah, and I can tell you, Alex sent something this morning, he goes to all the, or participates in all the briefing. So the latest one is they're just about done, they'll never say a date, but they're just about done with all the chlorine and their, excuse, it's a long run of pipe and a lot of water, but they're happy with the results and now it's going through the final proctoring of that. So October 6th was their date and they think they can beat that. And they're going to let us know as soon as, if they can beat that or not, right now?
Sure.
Sure. So yeah, they're, if I was the betting person, you wait till October 6th, but that's their, we know we're going to have it done by then date. And this is all about the water testing, all the repairs are done, it's about the testing and the bacteria.
So at some point in time, not that they're sprinkling their lawns a lot, but people need to know that it's okay to sprinkle.
And we will let that out, yes.
We're counting on you, Alec. Councilmember Sage?
Nothing, sir.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Nothing.
Councilmember Trent?
Nothing.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, please. So in light of Oakland County coming here with their property assessment, which I had planned on doing this at the last meeting, but this worked out better since it's all fresh in your head as to what they did, I was going to give you a real estate update comparing year-to-date 2021 to year-to-date 2022. So year-to-date 2021, we had, has broken down residential properties and condo properties. So we had 120 sales, residential homes and 67 condos, so a total of 187 year-to-date 2021. We had condos, average sales price was 227, 483, average square footage was 1311 and the average square foot price was 16972. For the residential, it was 2465 square feet, 227 a square foot and 526,070 for the price. Average days on markets for condos were 26 and average for residential were 39, that was in 2021. So 2022, we have 109 residential, 52 condo for a total of 161, so we are behind a little bit. But residential, 21 days on the market, condo 17, and residential was at 2327 a square, 2327 average square footage and price per square foot was 247. And condos are 1,354 average square feet at $180 a square foot. The average sales price of a condo is 253,614, average sales price of residential is 548,906. And that is taken into account every price range to come up with that average in there. So if we look at the year-to-date of all of 2021, we might, we might make that, we had a total of 258 total sales residential and condos in 2021. And sales prices were apparently around the same price as well as that. But what's really interesting is we have, the National Association of Realtors puts out an economic impact for every state, so what you know what a typical home sale brings and generates in a community. And every sale in Michigan brings, the total economic impact is about $77,900, okay? And that takes into account income generated just from the real estate industries, expenditures related to home purchasing, the multiplier of housing-related expenditures, and then again, new home construction. So the real estate industry in Michigan had 97, 97.6 billion in sales or 17.2% in 2021. So it's a huge economic driver of what every house sale actually does and it's really never broken down for the sale actually does, and it's really never broken down for the public to see that. So, it generates a lot. So, I'm going to turn all this over to Anthony and Marcy, so they have it from doing all their info.
Councilmember Sage?
Yes, Mr. Ray, and Councilmember Peterson, thank you for that report. Apparently, my condo is now for sale. Based on, well, hell, yeah.
That's the average of all of them, and for sale. So, you have to understand that. Those are average numbers. That's the average square footage of the sales. No, the square foot price, but that depends on, I mean, this was all those sales.
It's still an average. It's not every.
No, it's not at all. Right, everything, yeah. But that's how they do that. So, thank you, Mayor.
Good, thank you. Meeting adjourned.
Nothing else, Mayor? Nothing, nothing?
I think I can...